Good evening and welcome to the December 13th, 2012 meeting of the Northampton School Committee. I will begin by asking the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Alden Moore?
Here.
Ms. Boudevault?
Mr. Michael Plin?
Sense his regrets.
Mr. Danny Meyer?
Present.
Ms. Lisa Minnick?
Here.
Mr. Howard Moore?
I'm here.
Mayor David Nachholz?
Present.
Stephanie Pick?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Shelpho?
Here.
Mr. Eda Houseby?
Present.
Your Honoring, Mr. Alden Moore.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the public comment period. Do we have those who are signed up to speak during the public comment?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot that we have a list. Sorry about that. Okay, so, looks like we have a...okay, so, the first speaker is Jeff Finley. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Finley and I live at 39 Clara Avenue in Florence. I'm here to speak against the late start. I am also here to ask the school committee to vote on this issue. Six months after the first forms, this is still a topic of discussion. As a taxpayer, I want a school committee, not a late start committee. At the meeting last week, you wanted to create an ad hoc committee so the committee can get the input from the community. You know the opinion of your school administrators, you know the opinion of your high school teachers, you know the opinion of your high school students, and you know the opinion of the community that shows up to these meetings. Exactly whose input are you looking for? It's time to vote. Brian Salser was hired as superintendent, I assume, because it was believed he would be the best person to lead the Northampton Public Schools. Brian was charged with providing his professional opinion on what improvements could be made to the Northampton Public Schools. Nowhere was a late start mentioned. In addition to Brian's list, now the current budget has been cut. It is time to lead, follow, or resign. It is time to vote so you, as a school committee, can move forward on improving the school system for all students. Continued delay just makes all of us dig in deeper. It is time for a vote, not another committee. Thank you.
The next speaker is Cindy Mahoney.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Mahoney and we live at 28 Fox Farms Road in Florence. We have three daughters at NHS, JFK, and Leeds, and are grateful for the work of their teachers. Parenting is often an equal balance between love and logistics. Tonight, our family was tripped up by the logistics piece, so Rosie came along for the ride. Ironically, her bedtime will be later than usual this evening. There are two issues I would like to address. The first is sleep. Early start time is not the sole cause of the sleep deficit some teenagers experience. It's no coincidence that this issue has received more attention as technology has proliferated. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control, and the Mayo Clinic all offer tips to help families ensure a better night's sleep. Dr. Mary Cashkin's research is frequently cited by late start proponents, but she too recognizes there are more immediate steps parents can take, such as establishing good sleep routines and powering down electronics. Perhaps a presentation on healthy sleep habits could be done similar to the Northampton Prevention Coalition's talk on the teenage brain. This would be much less expensive and far less disruptive than changing a whole district's schedule. The second issue is the manner in which the subject of late start has dominated the school department's time and energy. The school committee has a duty to ensure that children in all grades pre-K through 12 can be successful learners. The school committee is also charged with representing its constituents. You've heard from students, teachers, parents, and administrators that the majority are against the idea of a later start at Northampton High. Late start is not one of the objectives outlined in the District Improvement Plan. This plan was developed with careful consideration of the educational needs of all students at all levels of Northampton Public Schools. In addition, there are very serious concerns put forth by the state which must be addressed, including the Level 3 designation of one elementary school and the Corrective Action Plan the Special Ed Department is working on. Teachers and administrators are making every effort to address these and other pressing concerns, but the late start question is distracting from that. The school committee needs to put aside this issue once and for all. If this were to go to a special ad hoc committee, the school committee would be setting a precedent it may later regret. Why is an ad hoc committee even necessary? At the behest of the school committee, the superintendent has invested a tremendous amount of time trying to come up with a workable solution, but budget constraints have hamstrung that. You've heard from the Transportation Director and the Athletic Director about the financial and logistical impact of a later start. Putting this out to an ad hoc committee discounts the valid and varied opinions of the majority and disrespects the careful consideration that has already been put forth. The federal, state, and local budget forecast is grim. The school committee has a financial responsibility to ensure that the needs of all students are met within the district's means. Because of this, difficult decisions must be made. The budget and the stated educational priorities confronting Northampton Schools point to the fact that a shift to a later start time for NHS simply can't be done and is extraneous to the school department's objectives. The majority of students, teachers, parents, administrators have clearly said no to a later dismissal time at the high school. By voting tonight to put the issue of late start to rest, so to speak, the school committee and superintendent can redirect their energies to where it is most needed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer McKenna.
My name is Jennifer McKenna. I live at 89 Florence Street in Leeds. I want to thank you for forming a committee to address the nitty-gritty details of changing the high school start time. A well-composed committee with a clear mandate and timeframe will channel people's good energy and ingenuity into analyzing the impact of making this change and identifying concrete and responsive strategies to address the details. I urge that it include people with the authority to command ready access to information and key informants. I also urge that the committee be charged to act expeditiously to analyze the issues and strategies to address them to enable this change beginning September 2013. They say the devil's in the details. In this case, I believe the opposite is true. In this case, I believe that delivery from divisiveness is in the details. I've been struck by how the process of repeatedly asking people to say yes or no to this change without a detailed plan for how it would be implemented has fomented a climate of confusion and misinformation, issue fatigue, and some level of divisiveness. Empowering this committee to address the details of implementation promises real movement on this conversation and healing of those divisions. Last week, the superintendent said he wanted the committee to survey the community again. To even consider this possibility, we must acknowledge that none of the surveys administered this year were valid. People were not given sufficient information to understand what they were voting on and were left to imagine details about how a change would affect them. Increasing numbers of people have a knee-jerk reaction based on misinformation run amok. The survey pool has been polluted. Another survey which just asks people to say yes or no without explaining why will only fail to gather...not only fail to gather useful or valid information, it will be a prescription for furthering community confusion, insecurity, and drama. One approach to a valid information gathering that could be useful at this point would be one that, number one, presents the context that the school committee has long been considering a late or high school start time change for two reasons: the evidence that a later start time has academic health and safety benefits for all students, even high-performing students, and the evidence that the 7:30 start time hinders the educational experience and performance of a significant number of high schoolers, of our high schoolers. And number two, asks how people think the change would affect their schedules, if people are opposed, why, and if they have ideas about strategies that could help ease the transition. This approach would enable the committee to weed out questionable concerns, like a later start time will mean I can't go to Starbucks before my piano lesson, identify responses based on misinformation, and explore whether the misinformation is based in any reality, identify details and concerns that a plan will need to address, and tap concrete input that could ease implementation. I would also reiterate that I think it's entirely inappropriate to be asking students to make this decision. You need to make this decision on their behalf. My son, for example, exhausted, grades are suffering, voted no on every survey because he heard that it would mean that a later start time would mean cutting the theater program. Don't know where he...why he thinks that's true, but he's like a dog with a bone about it now. No matter what I say, he thinks that's what's going to happen, so he's voted no against his best interest. There's a lot of that happening in these surveys. Thank you so much for your work on this. Can't tell you how much I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Steve Harrell.
Good evening. My name is Steve Harrell. I live at 474 Elm Street, and my daughter graduated from Northampton High in 2006. Since I was nicely quoted in the Gazette this morning, I thought there was no necessity for me to speak tonight, but it's just so tempting. It's my three minutes, my precious three minutes, and I thought of Oscar Wilde when he said, "The only thing I can't resist is temptation." So, here I am, but it's short and sweet. The Washington Post is one of the most influential publications in our country. Just four days ago, the Post ran its own editorial, not a guest column or letter, to the editor urging the Montgomery County, Maryland Public Schools to delay their school start time, which is now 7:25. I read the editorial with personal interest because I myself went to high school in Montgomery County, Maryland, adjacent to Washington, DC. When I graduated some years ago, the start time was 9 o'clock and the end time was 3:30. 9,700 signatures were presented to the County Board of Education two days ago, and in support, the Post editors referenced, quote, "incontrovertible evidence," evidence, not research, per se, "of the benefits to students, schools, and communities of start times that are more in sync with adolescent sleep patterns." The Post says that the signature campaign, quote, "tapped a groundswell of support from parents who are sick and tired of their children being sick and tired." The editorial goes on to say that it won't be easy to reconfigure Montgomery's massive transportation system, and by the way, they have 25 high schools, or to change long-held routines, or to please everyone. And here's my favorite and final quote from the Post: "Those difficulties, though, cannot justify ignoring or tolerating the harm to teenagers caused by unhealthy start times." Professor of neurology and the director of the Minnesota Regional Sleep Disorder Center, Dr. Mark Mayowal notes, "In all of the debates we have heard about start times, no one's argument is that children learn more at 7:30 than at 8:30. Schools are scheduled for adult convenience. If schools were for education, then we should promote learning instead of interfering with it." I'm glad the school committee is yet taking this issue so seriously, and I wish your new committee the best of luck in finding good solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
That completes the sign-up list. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, so we'll move on to the announcements. Are there any announcements from the school committee?
I'd like to make an announcement. I'd like to state that Ryan Road School had a fundraiser that was going to help the clothing that I had talked about earlier, and it made over $1,250 within a short period of time. And the fifth graders of Ryan Road were going to be having to pay more, and yet it compensated for it all, and there's a wee balance, and they're expecting it to be done within another month or two to have that $200, $300 balance taken care of. But it was very successful while we're recycling also to bring in a lot of money for the Nature's Classroom.
Mr. Moore?
Sort of in the nature of a recognition, I'd like to...I went to the first-ever production in the Black Box Theater in the high school, and I'd like...that was on Thursday night, and I'd like to really commend the people who built it for their excellent vision and execution of that vision because it made the plays, which were just small plays, they were the one-act plays that were the end of a class in theater at the high school, it made them much, much better than if they had been performed in front of a small audience in a large theater. And so, it was really, really wonderful to see, you know, somebody's idea that has been made real.
Any other announcements from the school committee? Okay, so we'll move on now to the recommended actions, and we have a consent agenda this evening that includes the following items: the approval of minutes of the school committee meeting of Thursday, October 11, 2012, and the school committee meeting of Thursday, November 8, 2012. It includes four contracts: Strong Bussing Corporation, $8,441; the Northampton Parent Center, $8,910; the Collaborative for Educational Services, $22,600; and Family Ford of Northampton, $11,999, for a total of $51,950. There's also two field trip requests. The first is Bridge Street School, Nature's Classroom, Beckett Mass, April 2nd through the 5th of 2013, and then an NHS ski club trip to Okemo Mountain, Vermont on January 27, 2013. That was an additional one that was added.
I didn't receive anything about Nature's Classroom.
Uh...
No.
It was on my agenda. Wasn't in your packet?
It wasn't in the packet.
Oh, I had it mailed to me, though. Yep. I'd like to see it. Here it is.
So...
How about the comments? Every year.
Right.
So, could we just begin with a motion to...
Move to approve.
First of all, I'm not sure if there's a question.
If there's a...if you have a question or concern about one of the contracts, should we separate it?
Pull it out.
Certainly.
Okay, so I'd like to separate the Collaborative for Educational Services.
Okay, so we'll move that off the...that's for $22,600. We'll move that off of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as...
I'm... Okay. Is there a second? Second.
Okay. So, all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, would that one exception say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so...
I can make that a motion to approve that contract from the Collaborative as presented?
Okay, so there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
I second.
So, this is a motion on just the Collaborative for Educational Services contract, $22,600, and I would turn it over to Mr. Bofflin if you wanted to just...
Explain what this one is for.
The description is more or less misleading. It says environmental strategies specialist.
Let me read the description to you.
They could have had a better title for it. Assist the Coalition Coordinator and Steering Committee in planning and implementing open environmental strategies aimed at reducing youth substance use and abuse. Provides coordination, facilitation, and training on youth alcohol and drug prevention, youth development, organizational and community development, which may include prevention, capacity, strategy planning, program planning, and evaluation. So, it's a health services grant.
And how... This is grant money that has been given to us to give to the Collaborative?
No, this is...
I'm confused.
Probably NBC.
Because... Grant money that we've been awarded to be used in the health area to work with reducing youth...I keep saying it wrong. Reducing youth substance abuse, and the services are provided through the Collaborative.
So, you're right, lousy title, but how is this different than what we do through the Spafik Coalition with Karen Jarvis Vance?
I think it's all connected under the same grant. It's an extension of it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions about this particular contract? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the contract say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that completes those items. The next is reports and recommendations, and the first report is our student report presented by Sarah Moss Horowitz.
Hi. All right. My name is Sarah Moss Horowitz. I'm a student at Northampton High School. So, the first thing I wanted to kind of report back on is, at the last meeting, it was right after Hurricane Sandy, and Alex had talked about how we were trying to get some relief going, some sort of effort, so I just kind of wanted to report back on that. So, we did kind of a few things. One of them was there was already a blood drive, and so that blood drive was...because Red Cross at that point was collecting for victims, so that benefited the victims in that way. And then additionally, in advisories, we kind of...we ended up making posters in each of our advisories to basically altogether try to work towards having this relief effort where we collected various items that were really necessities, and we had them, and we opened it up to the public, I think Alex talked about it then, and we got, I think, four barrels of food, which is quite a lot, and various other things. So, that was quite satisfying. Kind of some other things going on right now. We just started the Toys for Tots program that we do every year where in each classroom the first period collects money to sponsor a student to get toys for the holidays. So, that's going on. Winter sports have started. For assemblies, we just had the poetry slam earlier today that I heard it was great. And for theater, as someone already mentioned, the theater department had their first event in the Black Box Theater. It was a one-acts festival. It's the first time we've ever done it in this way. There were two one-act plays presented by one of the theater classes, and it was really exciting to see the Black Box kind of in action, and it was very satisfying for people. And also, proceeds from one of the shows did go to the survival centers. That's cool. And then, one other thing I wanted to mention that is somewhat related to student news, but I just wanted to mention it. I'm also involved in a Western Mass Regional Advisory Council which meets at the high school, so I just wanted to mention it because, basically, it's different people from...different students from all over the state, and we kind of talk about relevant issues that not just people at my high school, but at different high schools are really highlighting as like what they find as the issues. And so, I just kind of wanted to share really quickly. So, as a regional project, we're thinking of doing some surveys, which I'll be in touch with also the school committee in terms of how to implement them, looking at guidance departments across Western Mass and classroom environments to kind of get some insight into just different...it's mostly about student opinion and also some teacher opinion. And on the statewide level, I'm sure you may know some, but on the Board of Education, because there is a student who's on it, he's not from around here, but he talked about guidance and ESL learning and teacher training as kind of their big issue. So, I just wanted to... Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. That's great.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a presentation from the Northampton Education Foundation's Small Grants. I don't see Sally Dean's lake here, so we may want to move on to the next agenda in case she's running a little late.
You...
You know, you could do that, but let's make sure we come back to it because I'd like you to vote approval even if she doesn't make the presentation.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure we come back. So, the next item on the agenda is an update from Johanna McKenna on the new teacher-mentor program.
I hope you got in your packet a kind of...just a summary of the mentoring program. We kind of restarted it this year with some additional tweaks that we discussed with the administrators over the summer to improve it, so I'm just going to highlight the changes from the prior years and if you have any questions. Our goal was to really make it a more friendly process and help teachers feel connected not just to their school or to their department, but also to the district as a whole. And so, one of the things that happened that was new this year was Gwen Agna, who's the principal at Jackson Street School, conducted a guided tour of the city of Northampton on the day of the first new teacher orientation in August. And so, she took all the teachers who were new around to all the schools in the district so that they could orient themselves if they weren't familiar with Northampton, and provided some history of the city and its neighborhoods and the communities so it would help children...uh, help children, help the teachers really understand where the children were coming from. And it was great. The administrators went along for the ride, and that was fun, too. Also, another new aspect this year is we have added in, in addition to teachers being matched, new teachers being matched with a mentor teacher, we've added in a district-wide component where the teachers come together during the school year, every other month, to talk as a group about more district-related issues. The first...they are separated, secondary and elementary, with some overlap because sometimes the issues are a little bit different. But the first session was held in October, and it...the focus was on children with attention deficit hyperactivity disorder and other distractions from being totally engaged in the classroom, and we had two psychologists come and make presentations to the new teachers in that area. This past month, we were really basically doing a check-in and looking at curriculum and grading and how student...teachers were tracking students' progress during the year. And so, we have different themes that will go on through the school year. And at each individual school, the principals are making time on alternate months for new teachers to get together, if they wish, after school with the mentors to just kind of go through some specific building-based issues that might be coming up. And I think mostly it's just to provide a regular contact so that new teachers know that if they need support or help, there are some built-in, you know, kind of scheduled, planned opportunities for them to touch base with different people in the district and help them get to know a lot more people and not be so isolated as sometimes new teachers can feel. That's about it. So, we're going to have an evaluation at the end of the year to kind of find out how to fine-tune mostly the topics and the subjects that we are going through and maybe even take a look at doing the timeline differently, like front-loading some of the stuff more in the months of September and October. But we really want to take our guidance from the people going through the process and make sure that it's, you know, designed well enough to really provide the level of support that they find comfortable. All teachers who are new were invited, but only teachers who are newly certified are required to have, you know, a mentoring program. But anyone who's new to the district, even if they've been teaching for a number of years, they're all welcome to come, you know, or drop in. You know, it's...that's pretty much up to them because they're not required to attend, but we do have some veteran teachers who are also participating because they're new to Northampton. That's about it.
Are there any questions?
I'd like to make a comment if I can.
Certainly.
I want to say thank you to Johanna for what she's done for this program. She's given it organization and structure and really helped put themes in place that will help our new teachers be successful in their beginning their careers in the classroom. Working with the principals and the teachers, she's found out what they need and what they want and put it together to deliver it for them in a very professional way. And I have to say that one of the reasons why you're so successful at it is, I think, it's probably one of your favorite parts of your job. You've been having a lot of fun with it, and we're seeing great results. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Minnick?
I'm curious where the funding for this program comes from. Obviously, the state requires us to do it, but I'm sure they didn't send us a check to do it, and so does this come out of the basic professional development budget or does it have its own line on it?
That is a wonderful question.
Yay!
Actually, it really, in a way, the state does provide the money for it because it's one of the features of...that comes in the Title II grant, which is a grant for overall professional development, and that's its happy home. So, we are...what comes out of that grant are...a lot of the services that we're, as a district, providing are being provided at...are not being compensated, they're part of people's salaries or positions, but there is a small cost for mentoring and printing because the teachers who are mentoring new teachers get paid a stipend for the work that they put in.
Thank you. Did they get a training to do that mentoring?
Yes, they do. Right now, only trained mentors are providing the training, and in January, we'll be starting training for a new round of mentors who may want to start mentoring in the fall of next year.
I had a question that I answered most of it, but not all of it. In terms of the number of people who have chosen not to participate as opposed to those who do, you said it was required for people who had only been certified for one year or less?
Well, people who are in their first year of teaching, really first year of teaching, I like went to college, took the teacher test and got certified, those people are required by the law to have, to participate in an induction program. So they are all participating. Then we have people who may have taught for five years or may have taught for 15 years, but not in the city of Northampton. So they may have gone through an orientation program as a brand-new teacher in another district, but not here. So they're welcome to come because there are things that we do that are different than they may have done in their other school systems. So they're welcome to participate if they want that level of information, but they're not required to.
So somebody who was a new teacher a year ago in another district, has taught for one year and comes here, they're not required?
If they have been through an induction program in their other district, under the law, they would not be required to participate in ours, but they would be invited to.
Are they encouraged to?
I think, for the most part, honestly, Stephanie, we haven't had really that difficulty. People, more people have wanted to participate than not. In fact, we have some, you know, the program last year was a little bit spotty, and so we invited all the teachers from last year who were hired due last year in Northampton to participate, and many of those people are participating, too. So I think teachers find it helpful.
As far as the teachers who are the mentors, are they chosen by you? Are they recruited because they want to, they come to you and say they want to?
That is another wonderful question. Actually, anyone can volunteer to be a mentor, but they're actually vetted through the principal. And so, and it's the principal's role to match up the mentor teachers who are available with a new teacher. And a lot of times, they're designed to be either teaching the same grade, or in the same department, or a special education teacher would mentor another special education teacher, or by role, so that they really can support the teacher across a really broad area.
Well, it sounds like a wonderful program, and I was just wondering, do you have a lot of volunteers for mentoring?
Actually, we have a whole list of people who want to be trained as mentors now, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Zahowski.
I would just say, as a trained mentor and as a teacher that's been a mentor to a new teacher, it is, it's a great experience, not only for the new teacher coming in who gets an opportunity to kind of have someone to go to, you know, to ask those questions that they might not want to approach administrator, you know, where's the bathroom, how does the printer, copier work, those types of things that you don't want to show yourself as a neophyte right away. You can kind of go to your mentor to help you. And it's also rewarding as a veteran teacher to be able to share kind of your experience and then hear from a new teacher, feel their new energy, and to kind of get revived through watching them come through what you did so many years ago, and really wish you had, but it wasn't in place back then by the state, so.
Yeah, that's a good, very good point.
Thanks.
Any other questions for?
Sounds like a good question.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is update on the Special Education Corrective Action Plan progress, and welcome Lori Farkas.
So you should all have this in your packets, I believe, and I apologize for the delay in tracking these things down as being in this new position. When the mid-cycle review happened in October 2011, the district was found to be in compliance in all areas of the special education mid-cycle review. So that means that every area that was cited in the corrected, in the original audit three years before was corrected and found in compliance. Are there any questions about that? Our next audit is in the school year 2014-15, and that will be in the area of special education, compliance with, oh my gosh, I just blanked.
ELL.
Pardon me?
ELL.
ELL, and also, hold on one moment. It's not in here. I'll think of it. In addition, I had provided a little spreadsheet chart for the administrators at our last administrators' meeting regarding the, it's a draft, I would like to say, regarding the profile of special education in each one of our schools, special education and English-language learner services. So this is a draft, the numbers are not absolute, and it has information about the total number of students in each school, the number of special education students, the percentage in each school, and number of English-language learners in each school, and then the number of staff. Our staff number is correct for each school, and folks should know also that we provide a fair amount of services in our schools through outside contracts. I'll pass this along. I'm not sure I have enough.
You say outside contracts, can you tell me what kind of services we contract for?
We contract for bilingual speech evaluations, for some specialized occupational therapy services, for some speech services, vision, mobility, and orientation services, and assistive technology evaluations, consults, and other types of augmented communication consults, too. And evaluations.
Did you not get one?
Do I have one?
Oh, okay.
We were talking the building profile?
Yes. I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
I had a question about the...
The audit?
Yeah, the audit, great. It's a general question, it's one that came up, I think, last year or the year before, actually, in the sped pack about, you know, it's one thing to audit because, you know, it shows, it shows what, you know, to audit well, but the next question is, is what's really happening in the classroom, sort of specific things. I don't know, like SE 34 here, the continuum of services. The review of records and interviews indicate that we have a continuum of services, which is a good thing. The question that isn't answered and was left begging is, do we have an adequate continuum, or finally enough graded continuum? Because the continuum could just be two points, right? One on each end.
That's true.
And so what are we doing to sort of address that kind of the next level that underlies the audit?
Really glad you asked that, that I wish, I was hoping someone would ask something like that.
Thank you.
For the last four months, Pam Plummer and I have been in the schools every single day, most days, all day, doing various things, consulting to principals, working with special education staff, doing trainings, attending meetings. And I think at this point, we both feel that we have a very good sense of what's going on in special education. To a lesser extent, I have a medium sense of English, what's happening with English-language learners. And we're at the point where we are starting to meet with people to try to more deeply understand those continuum of services in the buildings, to look at entrance and exit criteria for the specialized programs, to write up the specialized programs, and to look at where we're missing, where we have holes in some of those specialized programs in terms of that continuum from elementary to high school or to 18 to 22. And our hope is, over the next two months, to present and to work with principals to present those pictures written up and to look at some reallocation of resources in different ways. Make it a real continuum.
Right. The second question is a similar one, it's again, it's based on this, you know, you can audit well, but what's happening, you know, below the audit has to do with the delivery of what's in the IUPs. I know that's always been a vote of contention between teachers, parents, students, you know, across the board, it's a difficult thing. What are we doing to address that part which doesn't really get looked at in the audit?
So service by service, I've started to analyze how we're delivering our services. And I, my first area of analysis has been assistive technology consultation. I think I'm going from small to big. And next is occupational therapy services. And it's both an analysis of how we're delivering services for providers that we own in our district, as well as people that we're using as consultants, and to look at the different models that are being used within the district, and how we're accessing that consult time and trying to streamline it and make it more effective for students. So in that, I mean, that's a lot of stuff, but in that, I think I'm having, getting a better sense of when we are really adhering to educational plans, when we are mostly adhering, and where we fall short. And so, you know, it's a process.
Yes.
Over time.
And I think then the other thing that was sort of like that was in the things like, particularly in the sort of individual, really that are instructions to the classroom teacher in terms of behavioral supports or things like that, that can be pretty detailed and specific, and probably very hard to actually implement because you're teaching a classroom. What do we, what's the work there?
The way I see that is, kind of the next wave is working with classroom teachers to train them to understand how to work with a wider range of student needs in the classroom, and become proficient at that, so students can receive more or most of their services in the classroom. And there are lots of models out there. One of the ideal models to look at is early intervention services in early childhood education, where both special educate, well, all early childhood certified teachers are duly certified, special ed and regular ed. And so, speech and language pathologists are in the classroom, occupational therapists, physical therapists are all in that classroom, and all students benefit from the activities that are carried on by those professionals. I think I gave you a script, Howard, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of questions from you. One is just looking at the ELL staff in the different schools. So I'm seeing that you have two ELL teachers for 38 kids in elementary school and one for 20 kids at JFK. Point two five, is that decimal in the wrong place?
No, it's... And one of the reasons I felt like, I always feel like it's important to do something like this, and I redo, I will redo it every year, that's what I did at Hampshire Regional, is to look at how we've allocated resources and to really examine it closely, because sometimes things just morph without anyone really paying, focusing on how it got that way and where we need to go from here.
So it could be that there's a cohort of kids moving up, but not necessarily the staff moving up to manage that?
There are a lot of scenarios, but we need to address it.
I would add to that, that you also plan for students to become more proficient, because more kids move in to the district when they're younger, and fewer move in in their teenagers, right.
I was wondering if there was less need for as much intervention in the high school.
That's part of it. The tricky thing at secondary is there's a need for a greater level of content support, as you might imagine.
My other question, I'm assuming that the percentage column includes the kids who are in the special programs. Would that be correct?
Correct.
So I understand that at Jackson Street, the percentage is higher because they have maybe more kids in those specialized programs. At Bridge Street, the number is very high. Are the preschool kids included in that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be the reason?
Yes, that is the reason, because those are the preschoolers from all over the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Ms. Minnick?
My question, it's not so much a question, it's just that you may or may not know that I am Northampton's representative to the Board of Governors at the Collaborative for Educational Services. And I just wanted to say that I would encourage you to utilize their services to the extent possible, but I'd also ask you that if you find that there are services lacking through the collaborative that you think we could benefit from, that you would let me know so that I could advocate with the direct, the program directors there to include those services, so.
I speak almost daily with Sherri Smith.
Okay, great. Well, I'm, as I said, partly because, partly because the collaborative is located in Northampton, partly because I've been involved with it for so many years, and partly because I'm concerned about its future and want to see it continue to thrive. I want to ensure that we are active members, and I also want to make sure that Northampton continues to get the benefits for its membership dues and the tuitions that we pay. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to be sure that you knew that I was the one that sits on the collaborative ward, so that if you ever have questions about it, you can let me know.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Lori.
We're going to now move back up to the presentation by the Northampton Education Foundation of the Small Grants, and I would recognize Sally Dean's Lake.
It's always a pleasure to come to the school committee. I realize you are short on time and have a lot to deal with, so I am just, and that you all have a copy of the grants that have been approved. So I'm just going to read the titles of the grants and the amounts, and the schools to which they're going. And I just want to say at the outset that I think this was a particularly exciting pool of grants, because there were a number of grants from the Bridge Street School, which for the past four or five years, there haven't been so many grants from Bridge Street, and we sort of puzzled as to why. And for whatever reason, there were a number of really sound proposals from Bridge Street, and it felt really good to sort of even the balance a little bit. So, in this fall funding cycle for the 2012 Small Grants Program, we awarded $24,795 to 15 applicants. And those grants are, the first grant is to JFK for What's the Big Idea, it's the second year for $2,000. The second grant is to the Bridge Street School for Celebrate the World, it's a first-year grant for $1,988. The third grant is to Smith Vocational School, Student and Faculty Book and Film Club, it's a second-year grant for $1,300. Fourth grant is to the Northampton High School, Adding Alternative Energy to Engineering the Future for $719. Fifth grant is to JFK, Math Department Data Analysis for $2,000. Next grant is also to JFK, Wright Flight, it's a second-year grant for $2,000. It's a second-year grant for $2,000. The seventh grant is to Smith Voke. This has a great title. It sort of sounds like a movie. Student Government and Electrical Go to Boston for $1,557. The eighth grant is to the Bridge Street School, Inspiring and Creating Young Writers for $1,988. Again, to the Bridge Street School for the Bridge Street School Garden Project for $1,995. And I think this, I'm not sure we funded a garden project for the Ryan Road School, but this is the, at least the third of four in my tenure on the Small Grants Committee of funding garden projects for the Northampton schools, and that's pretty exciting. Next grant, the 10th grant is the Heritage, Heritage Project, again, from Smith Vocational High School for $760. The 11th grant is a favorite of mine to the Northhampton High School for $590 for a centripetal force swing, which will be built in the high school by the AP physics students and then made available to both the students at the high school and the middle school students to experience centripetal force. The 12th grant is to Ryan Road for $2,000 for a project called Non-Fiction Zone. The 13th grant is training for VINS volunteers in K through 5 literary support at Bridge Street, Jackson Street, Leeds, and Ryan Road, and that's for $2,000. The 14th grant is a second-year grant for $2,000 to Jackson Street School for the Jackson Street Extended Day Care, Extended Day Program. It's an after-school enrichment program for the elementary school. And finally, there's a grant for $2,000, again, to Jackson Street for the Math Inquiry Group. So, questions?
Ms. Minnick?
How about first if I move approval to accept, or move acceptance of the generous grants from the Northampton Education-
Second.
And then I'd like to just comment briefly to say that I think that the, I'm, I'm, you're right, these are very exciting. They're always interesting and exciting. I'm always amazed at the creativity of the teachers and administrators that submit for these grants and what, what you choose. And I, I wonder how many don't get chosen, but, you know, it seems, it's clear that you, that you find some really worthwhile things to invest in. But the one I wanted to mention specifically was, I really liked the 13th grant, which is the Training for the VINS Volunteers. I think that's really neat that we've got two volunteer organizations that are, that do so much for the schools that are collaborating to provide something that's actually really critical for our, some of our young students. So, thank you for being part of that.
I wanted to make a comment, first to say thank you for your generosity, but also for the hard work that the NEF does in fundraising and getting the money so that you can support these grants. But then also, I remember last year, as I read through the stack of grants, and I was quite impressed with the level of creativity and the commitment teachers put into writing the small grants to submit them to you. But then this year, when I read them, it was, it was amazing. Again, a lot of creativity. People are spending a lot of time thinking about how to do a lot with a little bit of money.
That's true.
And I think, I, I give the selection committee a lot of credit because as I read through them, I was excited about every single one. And I don't know how you go about making your decisions, but you really do an excellent job. And thank you for your commitment to our schools.
I just want to say briefly that several people who sit on the small, on the school committee, David Narkwitz and Howard are, have been part of this process over the years. And I think it's the intention of the Small Grants Committee and always has been to foster creativity in this, in the, from the teachers. And we know that teachers are not professional grant writers. But we're, that's, so we try and fund as many projects as we can, given the mission and the criteria of NEF. And we usually, there's always more grants in the fall than in the spring, I think, because teachers have the summer to think about what they're, what they might want to do. But I think, I think we're, we're always pretty successful of, we certainly fund way more. I think there were four proposals, maybe five, that weren't funded this cycle. And actually, one was picked up, one of the five was picked up by the school department and going to be covered through the school department, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much again. So, now that we've had the presentation, there's been a motion made and seconded to accept these generous small grants. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you again. The next item on the agenda is an update FY13 Food Services, Financial, and Federal Regulations.
Thank you for inviting me here tonight to speak with you about the new school lunch program. Basically, what the government did in the middle of August was tipped the program upside down and say, okay, start all over again, and you got all new rules. I sent around a copy of the changes, the last regulations that we had and the new ones. The biggest part of the regulations is the fresh vegetables and canned vegetables that we use. There is now a requirement for dark green vegetables, red and orange vegetables, peas, starchy vegetables, and there's a certain amount that you have to give the children every week on the different vegetables. We've been standing on our head getting, trying to get the children to eat the vegetables. Some of the things we came up with was a crunchy coleslaw. Coleslaw with, with celery and green peppers and cucumbers in with the regular coleslaw, trying to get them to eat different vegetables. We came up with a cowboy beans, orange ginger carrots, fiesta rice and beans. We've come up with a marinated black bean and tomato salad. We give dip with baby carrots and celery sticks. So, anything to entice children to eat more vegetables. We also went to all whole grains, excuse me. The requirement isn't until July of 2014, but we decided that we wanted to be ahead of the curve and to implement everything. So, all our pastas, our breads, even our chicken patties have a whole grain coating on them now, so that we wanted to be ahead of everybody else. We were using whole grain pasta, we still are, but the government pulled it from their commodities because they felt that the children wouldn't accept it right away. Well, our children have had it for the last two years and really haven't noticed a difference. So, now we get to buy whole grain pasta on the market at full price. I didn't understand that one. Part of the hungry, the Healthy Hungry Free Kids Act of 2010, which precipitated all these changes, has another additional six cents per lunch that we can apply for. The purpose of that is to provide a little extra money to programs so that they can afford the fruits and vegetables. What I had to do was, we now have menus for all three different levels, K through 5, 6 to 8, 9 to 12, and that had to be put on the computer. I had to break it down into how many quarter cups of whatever I was serving all across the board. I had to then do a nutritional analysis of both lunch and supper for all three of the grades. I had to submit it to the state. They have 60 days to approve it, and once they do, they will give us six cents per meal back to October 1st. So, hopefully, that will help some of the money situation that we have here. Unfortunately, this is only funded for two years, and we know how Congress works, so we may or may not get any more after the two years. But we did all the work to try and get the six cents for now. Lunches this year have dropped. We're down almost 4,000 meals compared to last year at this time. I really don't know if it's because they don't want to eat their veggies and their whole grains or if there's something else in the works here. I did-
Cheryl, if I may, we are down versus last year, but I think I remember that last year at this time, we were up 20,000 luncheon or something. So, I would guess in a three-year, if we looked at three years of data, we're still significantly ahead of where we were two years ago. Is that, is that correct?
Three years ago, yes.
Okay.
I did look at the enrollment, and we're up about 70 students, and the free and reduced numbers really haven't changed that much. So, it isn't that the meals have changed because you have more children paying for meals. Last year, we were 31% free and reduced, 31.32. As of November, we're 31.47. So, we're pretty much equal to what last year was. One of our biggest expenses is produce. And I gave you a breakdown. It's a white sheet. It says produce usage September 2011 versus September 2012. And you can see how the prices have gone up, as has the usage. And last year in September, we spent $4,064.98 on produce. This year in September, we spent $7,122.47, almost double what we spent the year before. I, I had sent you, it's a landscape report, and it shows the produce usage for the last five years. Last year for the whole year, we spent $31,397 on produce. This year for the first three months, September, October, and November, we've already spent If we continue at this rate, our produce bill should exceed $55,000 for the year, which is almost double last year. Howard?
Is this because we're serving more produce or because it's more expensive?
Combination of both, but mostly, you can see the figures on the, the usage sheet that we're using a lot more produce than we ever have.
Not just more in terms of dollars, but more?
Yes, and we had to shift from things like, can't use salad mix and iceberg lettuce anymore, we have to use romaine. We have to make sure they get their orange vegetables every week and that type of thing. So, it's a combination of both. I did give you two sheets tonight. Both were updated. There's a beige one and a yellow one, and I updated the figures through November 30th for you. The beige one has income versus expenses this year compared to last year. The yellow one is basically the same thing, only broken down more, and I think it's easier to see how things have changed. We're down almost $10,000 in income and cash. USDA reimbursements, we're down over $4,000 because we're serving less meals. So, money-wise, income-wise, we're down almost $15,000 compared to last year. On our bill warrants, that's all our food. It includes equipment, repairs, paper goods, everything's included in there. Our bill warrants are down slightly, but that could change tomorrow if I have to do repairs on equipment or get a new piece of equipment. And our labor is down. Part of that was due to FY12, the school year went longer, and there was payroll from FY11 that hit in FY12, just by virtue of when payrolls hit. So, that's why my July, I spent more on labor than last year than I did this year. And it also depends on if school started earlier. If school started later one year and school started earlier, that affects the payroll too because then I'm paying it earlier. We also reduced labor. I eliminated a four-hour position at the high school, and I'm using subs as much as possible instead of permanent employees. And it's about a difference of about a dollar an hour. Projected, I just played with some figures. I took three months' worth of figures and figured out how much of my cash came in the first three months and how much of the reimbursements came in. And playing with those figures of last year compared to this year, income I figure for the year is going to be down by almost $30,000. Labor and the bill warrant will probably be down about $10,000, $15,000. So, in the end of the year, our expenses should probably be about $30,000 more than what our income is. Any questions?
Mr. Moore? Last year, were, was our, were our expenses more than our income as well?
Yes, about $30,000 was also.
So, very similar to last year. No, it's not.
You may remember, that's why we voted in the budget to try to support that.
So, does that mean that the $30,000 this year is including what we gave food service and it's going to get?
No. This isn't taking that into account.
Okay.
That's built in the budget to cover this gap when it occurs by the end of the year.
Okay. Got it. My question for you is, I thought I read something just like in the last week that the federal folks had changed their minds and were easing up on the vegetables and going heavier toward protein. Is that true or did I make that up?
I didn't get anything official yet. I've seen it in the Huffington Report, I've seen it on TV. Everybody knows about it except for us.
Okay.
What I saw was that they're going to ease up on the protein limits, that they can get more protein and ease up on the grains, but they're not easing up on the vegetables. I still have to give them the romaine lettuce and the carrots and everything else in the same amounts. But I haven't gotten anything official from the USDA or from the state, and I can't proceed or change things until then.
Do you anticipate that that would change any of your, of your financials, or is that just going to be something else that you have to just react to, but it's not going to appreciably change how you-
Well, if you add more food, your costs are going to go up.
Yeah.
If you start giving the children more food and you're not getting any more money and for the, the trade that you're serving them, the costs are going to go up and then we're going to be in a worse situation.
So, it wasn't a trade-off, they're just saying that you can give them more. Great. Oh.
And in conversation with area directors, both in this area and other places, we're all going through the same thing. There is not enough money to cover what the new regulations are. The government's only coming up with six cents. Six cents isn't covering what we need to do. There's a lot more labor-intensive things that we have to do now than we had before.
And just out of curiosity, how do our lunch prices compare to other districts? Is it, I mean, if everybody's going through the same thing, they all-
They're all similar. They're all pretty much 250. There was a regulation that came through that they all have to get up to at least 250. So, if a school district was charging a dollar and a half, they have to go up by 10 cents until they reach the 250 level. Because what they were doing was subsidizing their program through higher free lunch students. So, like a inner city that has 75% or whatever free lunch, they could give the paid lunches- So like a inner-city that has 75% or whatever free lunch, they could give the paid lunches a lower price than the $250 because they're subsidizing with the free lunch.
Okay.
I was just going to say, it does sound kind of like an unfunded mandate from the federal government where they're saying, you have to do this, we're not going to give you the money to do it. I was just wondering if you're seeing much of a difference in food waste with the new standards versus what, because we're, I know it sounds like less kids are eating, but are they also, when they do get the tray, are they tending to throw out a lot of the vegetables, or are they actually consuming it, or what do you see?
I'm seeing that they're throwing away the vegetables, but we're mandated to-
Right, yeah.
We don't have a choice.
Right, I know.
I'd like to, can we recognize our student representative for a question? Please, go ahead.
I just had a question, just out of curiosity. I know, I think last year, there is, there used to be an à la carte menu, and that was eliminated at the high school. Was that related to the legislation?
Not related to the legislation. It was related to the à la carte items that we were selling. We couldn't get any reimbursement. So that's why we went to the five different meals, so that every one is a full meal and I can now get the reimbursement for it.
Get full reimbursement for it. Yeah, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
I had a similar question, but it actually had to do with at the elementary level, when the kids order the peanut butter sandwich as an alternative, or the salad as an alternative. Like as a salad, you'd have lots of vegetables right there and that would be easy, but with the peanut butter sandwich, so you're actually going through and making sure that they get enough vegetables along with their peanut butter and jelly or whatever kind of sandwich on top of that? So they have vegetables and a sandwich?
And a sandwich and the milk and the fruit.
Okay, I'd just like, make a little comment. I went to the Fresh Wednesdays and just don't have time to eat all that food. I mean, it's a lot of food to have on your plate to eat. I mean, even if they did want to eat the vegetables, you just would have to just chew nonstop. I've never finished a meal there. I have never finished a meal there. I just look in amazement. I tried. But it's, I mean, it's really fast for the amount of food that you get and the whole process. By the time you sit down, it's actually really fast. You eat and before you know it, you're standing back up and you look down and your food's still on your plate. Now, I didn't throw mine away, I stuck mine to the side, came back, got it, because I wasn't going to leave my meal, it was very good, but, but the point was that, you know, I mean, I didn't have time, I've never had time to finish a meal there, never.
It's really fast, you've only got maybe 15 minutes to eat, and that's way too fast to have people eating. You should slow down to eat.
Sounds like basic training days.
It feels like it.
So with this waste, is there been an effort to try to compost or collect any of this, this waste?
There were parents involved with the composting program? I don't know if there still are. It was a parent-instituted program. Jackson Street had one, and then Ryan Road has one also. I don't know about the other two schools. But if, if parents would like to come in and help in compost, I'd be more than willing to have them come in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was just thanking you for the answer. Wistrzenhaus-
I'll let you go in a moment. We've talked a few, at a few meetings in regards to the waste, and it's come up a few times tonight. In your opinion, there's just no way to try to curb the waste in any way. For example, in past years, if you were serving a fresh fruit with, with your lunch every day, it may have come in the form of a, a big bowl at the end of the line where you can grab a banana, orange, or apple, and at that point, the student could take it or leave it. But now it sounds like it needs to be put on the tray and when the student leaves, it can't come back, therefore has to be discarded. Would that be accurate?
Yes, it is. And we try to offer a variety of fruit, so if they would prefer canned fruit, we have that available. We, I know at JFK, we have probably a couple of different canned fruits and then fresh fruit in a bowl. We try to do that at all schools.
So another example that I've heard, just from a little bird, is that, for example, when beets are on the, on the menu, for example, a childhood favorite, I'm sure by many, that in the past, you were able to kind of gauge how many people actually might want them, and therefore you could open a certain amount of cans or however you have that. But now, every student that buys a lunch needs to receive it, whereas before, you weren't putting it on. So not only are you responsible for, I mean, responsible for now serving it to every student, but now it goes in his waste and now we have to discard it and have it carried away. That's true, too.
Yes, but we try to encourage. We only have beets on once every five weeks. So once out of 25 meals. And we also put on zucchini squash, we put on a roasted butternut squash. We're trying to expose children to different vegetables. Hopefully at the elementary level, they'll learn to like vegetables and then continue on.
My wife has a good porridge recipe.
When my daughter was in kindergarten, and she's now in fifth grade, if, a lot of the kindergartens ate all of their meal, kindergartners at Ryan Road ate all their meal, and the reason was because if they did, they got a special celebration from the lunch lady who came behind them and went woo, 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 and it was the biggest thing. And so many kindergartners were like, I'm going to finish that meal, so they could get the woo-woo from Mrs. Keating at the time. But I mean, just like little things like that can also, not just eat, 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 but, I mean, my daughter used to eat everything just because of the, I've got to get a Mrs. Keating woo-woo. It was kind of like a hug, a kind of a, you know, yay. But it really worked for that year, and the kids really fought with themselves over eating everything so they could get that yay.
Other questions? Mr. Moore?
No.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes the food services presentation. The next presentation is the FY13 athletics financial statements. Mr. Miller is here.
Everybody in the morning, no, I have to read what happened. It's been a long day. Have you received your packets? Do you get them in color or black and white?
Black and white.
Let me explain this so you can understand how I, how I do these budgets. It's five columns. The first one at the top, it says estimated credit. I have it in blue, and that's basically if I purchase some item, I'll put its cost down. The next one, actual credit, is where it shows me when I get the bill warrant, I cross representatives to the bill and I raise it from the estimated cost to the actual cost. Estimated debit, I don't know, the credits are the deposits. Estimated debits is if I purchase something, and Stephanie picked this up last year and you got the black and white, anything in parentheses is a, is a negative. Last time we had a budget meeting, you didn't, I didn't do that and I corrected that for you and everybody else.
Thank you so much.
Key things I gave you, last year's 2012 physical year and this year's 2013. Now that the winter season has started, the best comparison I can have is that in 2013, we are approximately 400, on the same date as last year's December 12th, we have approximately, last year we had $14,682 to the good last year on December 12th. This year, we have $15,371, which is an increase of $690 from last year. We've also had an increase this year between the fall and winter of nine more athletes. Free and reduced lunches have stayed approximately the same. We've had, both seasons in the fall, we've had 37 free and 12 reduced, and in the winter, we had 26 free. And last year, we had six reduced players, and this year, we had five. And all free lunch students who are online registered for the free lunch program receive no, you do not have to pay a fee for any athletics. Reduced lunch people have to pay $30 for the first sport, $20 for the second sport, and $10 for the third sport. Okay. I also gave you a copy of the physical year, the cost per team. What I do is I go through the budgets at the end of the seasons and I try and estimate how many people we had per team, the cost they did for users' fees, cost for officials, transportation, and I divide it for the team, and then I have it added up over the, on the front page where the totals are. It's not exact, it's not an exact science, I'm not an accountant, but I try and make it as pretty close as possible. And so that's where we are now, is basically, we've noticed revenue increases in our football games. We did lose a couple, a little bit of money because of the mosquito scare, and hopefully we'll be able to address that next year, because I don't think the mosquitoes are going to be going away, but we'll have to be able to address it also and think about it in the future. This year, we've had three basketball games, two girls' games, and one boys' game. Girls' game has shown a significant increase in attendance the last two games, and I think a lot more students are coming to those games. Howard can attest to that. And the boys' game is about what we were last year. We had Putnam this year for the first game, and Putnam did not bring anybody to their, they usually don't travel with their kids, so we had a pretty good night that night, even with the National Anthem going awry. We had the, our fans sang it for us, which was pretty nice. So, that's where, so right now, we're basically approximately, approximately $600 to the good right now for last year. Costs have gone up one or 2%. Busing has gone up, registrations have gone up, and we've kept our athletic fees stable at the same amount we've had for the last three years. We've not increased them.
I know that you kind of put a moratorium last year on equipment and things like that.
We had again this year.
You are?
Yes. We're only paying for, I'm going to pay for essential items only, that is necessary either for safety or for a need, like you do baseball, so you can't use baseballs that have been in the swamp for a while.
And I'm sure you just sent out all the football equipment to be reconditioned.
Yeah, and that's going to be, I've talked to the people doing that, and the new rules, now the new law states that helmets are only good for 10 years. And so we're coming up to that season now where some of the helmets are going to be, have to be re, we have to purchase new ones. And they go for anywhere from $140 to $160 per helmet. And we have a meeting with the, the people who use, who do the reconditioning. We're going to have a meeting with them on, in January, the football coach, and we're going to decide what helmets we need, how many they're going to get rid of, how many we're going to keep. We do have a new football coach, and our program this year, again, attendance was increased, but there was also a new incentive, the players were there buying into his program. We almost made it to the Super Bowl this year and things like that, so we're expecting a bigger increase in the number of athletes next year for football. So, that's where we are right now.
Mr. Vaul.
Yeah, to follow up with Ed's question on the safety equipment, and there's a moratorium, does that include baseball bats? Are we buying bats with our money?
We are buying bats if we have to, because the new rules are, they've changed the new bats last year. The, the National Federation of High Schools and the baseball, or the NCAA, I can't remember which, which sport does which one, but we had to buy new bats. And bats go from anywhere $300 or $400 apiece, and they last for three or four or five years. So I purchased a few bats, the baseball boosters purchased, those will hopefully last for several years.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. First, thank you, Jim, for being here, and Nancy. I want to first commend you on the quality programs that we have in Northampton High School. You managed to bring quality coaches together and good training for the coaches and for the kids, and we've had athletic success on what's been a shoestring budget. And so it's taken a lot of financial management and supervision on your part, and I think you've done a very admirable job. I also know that the two of you worked together this year to put in a tighter structure and organization for fee collection and participation and financial management overall. And I'm just wondering if you had noticed any difference or improvements this year in your, your fee collection and the overall money in your budget?
Well, we, starting the winter season, we went to an online registration, which, some people did it, some people didn't. It was still, it was still a learning process, how we're going to do this, we get the, a form back from the parents that they did do it online with their check and their physicals and stuff like that. It does work a lot easier when we're doing the, I make emergency books for all the coaches. Printing out the emergency forms makes it a lot easier, instead of how you rip the papers off of each other when you send them in by hand, where you just print them off on forms, it makes it a lot easier getting the emergency books done and stuff like that. And we're still trying to work on the computers. We do have a secretary who works for me one hour a day, trying to get them organized and sometimes, depending on what her job is, doing other things, and sometimes it gets a little hectic in the office trying to get it done. But pretty sure this year, we're, I think it's going a lot smoother. It's still going to improve, I expect it to improve continuously as we start learning how to make it a lot better for us.
And in addition to the quality work that you do and the great athletic programs that we have for the high school, I also want to make sure that the school committee knows the work that Jim, in particular, Jim and Nancy have done with the concussion work, and we really are leaders in the state for the concussion testing and the protection of kids in, you know, in sports and concussions. So I don't know if everybody was aware of that, but Jim works very closely with Karen Jarvis Vance, and it's a wonderful program. Thank you for taking it so seriously.
Mr. Zahowski.
While you were speaking, I remembered a question I was going to ask the food service director, which doesn't help me now, but it was, she's gone.
She's gone.
But it has a tie-in, I believe, because one of the new things that's happened with food services, we've instituted a program called My School Bucks, where parents can online pay-
You're part of-
You're part of, you're part of My School Bucks?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that why you buy the lunches?
Right, so you're, you're paying-
I participate in it.
You participate, right. So how are you finding that? Is that a good program?
Initially, the first month, there was a problem where I paid by, I paid by check and they didn't recognize it. So they deposited, then they turned it back.
Right.
And, but I think with Carol and Barbara, they worked out that idea. So it's working really well now. They will send out a, a notice on email that if you are coming up with a shorter balance, then you just go online and, I think it's really great.
Okay, so where I'm going with this, because you probably don't know right now, other than a parent paying for his child's food through the department, is I'm wondering if there's a component, I don't know if Mark McLaughlin knows this with, with the program or if there's a similar one that might be able to help out with athletics, where parents can pay their athletic fee directly online, therefore cutting down on the secretarial work and you having to try to hunt people down to pay those bills.
Well, in the, on School Bucks, they, you have to pay an extra $2 for a service fee.
Right.
I don't know where that, who that, I have to pay that myself. With the organization I'm using now, which is Family ID, they can have that option to pay online, however, it's through PayPal. And how PayPal works is it's 30 cents per transaction plus 2% of what the amount is. So I figure that's going to be, if I do it that way, it's another five or, could be $5,000 or $6,000 that I would have to pay for. So I decided to just collect the checks. It's a lot easier right now to collect the checks unless there's another, another way of having the, the people registering pay the fee. That's not an option right yet with PayPal, so.
I just didn't know if there was a component with the My School Bucks, some way that we could collaborate together and maybe, you know, find a way, now that parents are becoming comfortable paying online for food products, that maybe they could also start to pay their athletic fees as well. I don't know if it's something that can be looked into or if anybody knows, that's all.
Ms. Minick?
Well, that's an excellent thought, because, I mean, I think it was, I'm trying to remember how many years ago, like eight or 10 years ago, that we started talking, maybe even longer than that, that we started talking about the possibility of having a declining balance card for students that would cover library fines, you know, tickets to the prom, whatever it is. I mean, all of the money can be put on the student's card and they can, all we need is the card reader that can read it in the appropriate place. So if you have one and the cafeteria has one and the library has one, and why can't that card go on and be a student's identification card as well? So students have one card that's kind of, they better not lose it. Bus pass.
I'll just now-
Yes, exactly.
Go swipe things with the ATM or wherever that you go.
I mean, it can serve as your bus pass, your ID card to get into the building, you know, if, after hours if it's locked or whatever, just everything. I, I would love to see that happen, but it sounds to me like if there's, if it's possible for the same system that handles lunch money to handle this, that would be great.
As long as the fees don't go off the athletics. Parents have to pay the extra for going online, that'd be fine, but I just, I can't right now what I'm using, I can't afford, the way we're bare bones right now, I can't afford to do it that way unless it goes somewhere else.
Is that service charge every time you make a payment online, or is it a one, a year or one-
It would. The agency I use now is one, is one fee, it's on there for the end of the fall thing. It was $1,000 for the year, which is approximately $2 per kid, per athlete for the whole year. And, but adding on that extra amount for the, if we're going to pay online, that they have 30 cents plus the 2%.
I guess I was asking, what do you as a parent pay for the, for the school lunch thing?
$2.
$2.
$2 per transaction.
Per transaction, so every time you deposit money in your student's account?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was reading a article in the, in the paper last week or the week before, it was in the Spotlight, and a parent was- And a parent was interviewed and, you know, although no one likes to pay more than they have to, you know, it sounded like for the convenience of being able to do it, people were open to paying that little extra in order to make sure that their son or daughter always had enough credit to be able to buy a meal on any given day. So just a thought. I don't know if it's something we can export.
And it sounds to me like it's an opportunity for us to negotiate with the company that provides the service to us for a lesser charge if we're going to be using it more often.
I don't know how School Bucks pays a school or not how it works, so I'm not familiar with that. But I mean, something to work -- I mean, it's always good to look at. I think now with the more technology there is, there's more people out there who are willing to do these things. As long as it's a reliable organization, we can do it that way. I'd be happy with that way.
Mr. McLaughlin's looking at me because he knows he's about to be assigned a job. Other schools do have the opportunity, the availability for people to pay their fees online. And even Williston, I believe the students have a card much like you were talking about or even they can use in local restaurants. So I'd like us to look into that, find out, you know, what kind of companies offer that service and what kind of costs. We can bring the information back to the school committee. I think it's a good idea.
And I would just add to that. I know that Angela Rota and Mark are looking at a new student information system. We'd want to make sure that if we do some kind of a system like this, it would integrate with whatever new system we go to.
Mr. Meyer?
I know that the last time that we were discussing the fees and the different costs of the different sports, that one thing that came up was the disparity between the costs of certain sports and other sports. And it's really with this data, you know, with your report in front of me, it really lays it out clearly that we have a significant number of sports that actually make money.
Yes.
And I understand that it's, you know, maybe it's a fool's errand to try to achieve some kind of equity, but I wonder whether that's come up in the past and how you get to the decision of saying, despite the fact that there are really large differences in terms of the cost for different sports, how do you decide that it's going to be a standard fee per sport?
I think the way it is, like football is probably one of the more expensive sports, but they also have the biggest gate receipts and things like that. And indoor track, which Smith College has been gracious enough to let us use their facilities, they still pay the athletic fees. It's a nominal fee. We have to pay through the MIA and the PVIC, our conferences. But I use that to help us supplement the other areas because if, like wrestling, this year we have 22 kids. And their things would not be able to, you know, cover everything that they use or other small sports. And I think it's easier for me to have a general fee for everybody. It's more difficult to keep track of where it is now collecting the fees. Who's, you know, is football? Now, what happens if the child doesn't want football and they go to another sport? And it's -- sometimes we have kids switch sports. We have very -- we have a few cut sports. And what happens is we try and encourage those kids to, you know, go to another sport that doesn't cut. So when kids move, then you have to take the fee. You're going to give them money back or you're going to have to give them and pay more money. So it's a lot easier for me to do it that way. I think it's fair. It's equitable because.
It's more fair.
Nobody's really complaining about stuff.
Well, I think other schools have studied that too because that's a pretty common question, you know, why is cross-country you have to pay the same when all they do is run in the field? And it's a revenue generating sport, but we try to make it fair for everyone. And I believe that we're consistent with what other high schools are doing. Sometimes there is a higher fee for things like hockey where they have to pay for ice time, but in general, high schools try to keep the fee consistent.
There is a, I don't know, I think Mark has the superintendent. Massachusetts Superintendent's Association sends out a user fees guide across the state. And there are some schools that they charge, all sports have to charge like $250 to $400 per sport in some schools. Others don't have a fee at all, so it's a wide range of what they're doing. Some for individual sports, some for general all sports. And so it's really all what is necessary for the school to sustain the athletic department, the athletics for the kids.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller or Principal Athens is here as well? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is a vote on the acceptance of a gift from the community foundation for $3,000 toward the Black Box Theater. And I believe we have a parent representative. Jane Fleishman is here, one of the organizers of the Black Box Theater.
Do you move to accept it first or do you?
Does a -- you make the motion?
I have a motion to accept the grant.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you. And thank you all for making this such a simple process. My name is Jane Fleishman. My daughter Rosie Tobasnik is a junior at the high school and very interested in theater. And so of course, as one of her parents, what do I do? I help raise money for the school. And we had an anonymous donor. This is the second part of their donation. And we were able, with a great group of parents, faculty, administration, and with help from Mr. McLaughlin's office as well, attain this matching fund. So we were able to actually raise $10,000 and also get this matching grant for $10,000 from an anonymous donor. But the best part, the very best part, was that Joe Blumenthal at the Pleasant Street Theater gave us all of the seats that we wanted, like way more than we could have used. But we degummed them and desoted them and cleaned them off and restitched them, and they're beautiful. And if you get a moment to go check out the theater or come to any of the performances, I know you guys talked about it a little bit before, it's just phenomenal. And people bought little plaques, you know, how you do that kind of thing for their, in honor of their kids and kids who've graduated and also kids who haven't graduated yet. And as a parent, to be involved in something like this, what a great success. So I just wanted to really convey our appreciation to you all. You made it really simple to get this check into the city coffers and to go back to this really needed process with the theater teacher, Steve Eldridge, at the helm and some great parents and students, by the way, students who would come to meetings, you know, that's something new for me. I was shocked. And they worked hard through hell and high water. I guess you heard about the high water part. The kids were in there, you know, mopping it up. So anyway, I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this particular gift? Okay, so we've had a motion made and seconded to accept the $3,000 gift toward the Black Box Theater. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Any abstentions? Okay. Gratefully accepted. Thank you. The next item is a gift from Packards on Masonic Street in Northampton of $1,000. And this is a gift toward the Special Education Department.
Move to accept.
Second.
Okay. Is there any comment on this other than I'll just thank Robert McGovern for his continued generosity toward this particular cause? I know it's something that's very dear to him. So thank him for that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The next item on the agenda is a gift. This is $7,000. And this is from Gravity Switch Incorporated located on Market Street in Northampton. Is there a motion to approve the acceptance of this?
Let me hold.
Second.
I believe the superintendent.
Yeah, I'd like to explain this. You may remember, this came to the table last month. And you talked about the school committee policy that we accept donations, accept it into the school district, and we will determine how to spend those funds so that the criteria put forth on the letter, we would not necessarily agree to. But we worked out the money and we will do our best to, you know, support the wishes of the donor. I did call Jason. I explained that to him and he accepted those conditions. So we're resubmitting it tonight as just a donation of $7,000 to Northampton Public Schools.
Just to this topic.
Yep. Did you have a question?
Well, I did. I mean, so it's not, no longer specifically going anywhere. I mean, when you said you were going to try to honor his wishes, is that meaning that putting it towards maybe technology anywhere, but it's not going to go towards one grade level or anything?
Well, you remember that we have a technology initiative this year and are raising money from local businesses to support technology. And so in the big scheme of things, this is a small amount. And this amount of money naturally would go to leads anyway. So now we just don't have to allocate other funds to it. We have this donation to it. But we want all of our elementarys to have their fair share from the donations that I'm out recruiting. I'm not going to recruit money and try to favor one school over the other, so we will be spreading our donations equally among the schools.
A gratitude to Jason. Two in a row, you know, local businesses helping to support the schools. And I think that has something to do in part with how much you're getting out there. And the two of you really just really developing relationships with our local businesses and it's helping us. I think it's great.
Well, thank you. I think the credit goes to the teachers and the principals and Angelo and our technology department. I believe that the community has confidence in the work that we're doing and they're willing to write checks to help support the work that we're doing. So the credit goes to all of us.
Did you have a comment?
Well, the original thing said for field trips as well as technology. I take it that the field trip thing is kind of like.
Right. I left that on there so you remembered what it was for last year, but to show, to tell you tonight that Jason has agreed that it's being donated within the scope of our policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to accept the gift. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so again to Gravity Switch, Jason for that gift. The next item on the agenda is an update regarding the city charter. That's one that's on there for me to go through. As folks know, the city voters during the recent state federal elections approved overwhelmingly the city's new special act charter. And I tried to highlight just sort of three pages, three sections of it, Articles Four, Article Seven, and Article Eight that you have in your packet. And just for folks at home, if you go to the city's website, northhamptonma.gov, right on the homepage, there's an electronic link to our charter and our code of ordinances. So you can actually pull up the charter. It's searchable. It's, there's a table of contents, so all this information is there for you to review. Section Four is, covers the school committee, just goes over the terms of office, talks about the fact that we are now a 10-member school committee, which is essentially the same as before. The term of office has obviously now been changed. It's now a standard two-year term of office for all members. And while it's not on this section of the charter, there is a transitional section toward the end of the charter, which spells out how these things would be transitioned. So obviously, those of you who have a four-year term, that were elected to a four-year term, your term wouldn't start until your next, to the end of your four-year term. So some of you, seats that will come open this November 2013, those members who are up, those seats that are up for reelection would run for a two-year term. Another set would not run until 2016, I believe it is, or 15, rather, in those two years. So it's going to take a little while to transition so that everyone is on a two-year term. But that's what's envisioned in the charter. That's essentially it. There's, there are some prohibitions that have now been crystallized in the charter about school committee members not holding any other compensated city positions. The same holds true for the city council and other elected positions. The other major change in Section Seven is the finance and fiscal procedures. And while these affect the entire city, they will have an impact on the work we do as a school committee. Essentially, the way the process will now work is the mayor will call a joint meeting of the city council and school committee, including the superintendent, to begin a budget process at the beginning of the year to review the financial condition of the city, to go over revenue and expenditure forecasts, and essentially to sort of set the stage for the budget process. This is a bit of a change. I know that you would typically meet with the city council sort of at the end of the process. And so now the attempt is to get the city council, the school committee, the mayor, everyone together at the beginning so that we're all working from sort of a common set of financial numbers and projections as we then go off to work on our respective budgets. I'm now required 45 days before the beginning of the fiscal year to submit a budget to the city council. That's essentially what mayors have always traditionally done, May, early to mid-May. Now it's sort of codified that it has to be done 45 days before. And as you read down through this, you'll see that the school budget actually now has to be passed prior to the final submission of my budget to the city council. So it's going to mean a much earlier process for the school committee budget. So that will have to have been voted on. The school budget, I'll read, "The school budget as adopted by the school committee shall be submitted to the mayor at least 30 days before the submission of the proposed operating budget to the city council." So the city council will now receive essentially the complete city budget that will include the complete school budget as well as the city council budget so that when they vote on it, they're voting on the entire, the entirety of what's being proposed. And obviously, we're going to, that, we're going to come up with a timeline, which will change from year to year, but basically lay out a calendar for how that's going to play out. That meeting probably won't happen until mid to late January, that first kickoff meeting, because typically the governor announces his state budget in, I think it's like the 17th or 18th of January. So we probably want to wait until after that meeting so that we at least have some number to work with in terms of what our state aid projection might be. And then you see there's a series of requirements that the city council has to go to to take action, public hearing, et cetera, after the budget. Did you have a question?
I just wanted to comment to clarify. So I believe that what that means to us is that the school committee will need to vote our budget in the April meeting, and that would be 30 days before the mayor would have to submit his.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to count the days. It may, it may, it may be late May, early April, but we'll have to figure that out.
Okay.
Because part of it is, we need it, we need it 30 days. We need to be able to have enough time to then incorporate it into our budget. So we'll work out the logistics of that, but it's roughly in that timeframe. Yeah.
We're all shaking our heads in disbelief because it's such an incredibly different timeline than what we've done before. So mid-April, we're generally just vetting out drafts still, and now we're going to need to be done. And that's well before we have the information that we need to finalize the budget from the state. And we don't even have the grant numbers of federal grants by then.
I can't hear you with the fan going.
I can see that a number of us are shaking our heads that we have to have a budget submitted for city council approval by mid-April, which is two months earlier than we have voted in the past. And I'm just wondering how we can possibly do that when we don't have our grant monies, federal grant monies information then, and we don't certainly have very much information usually from the state by then.
That is true.
How are we going to do that?
We don't actually have that much information either at the city level in May, so it's the same.
We generally use every extra meeting that we can. We usually have an extra two meetings in May and two meetings in June scheduled so that we can get it all done in time. I'm wondering how this is going to work.
Well, I can tell you that this is a more common schedule in the rest of the state than the schedule that we previously had where literally the city budget would be passed and then the school committee would pass its budget after the entire city budget had been passed. So I don't know what your experience was in other communities.
This is back to the process that I'm familiar with, that we'll get the number. It's actually easier because we'll get a number from the mayor of what we need to build our budget up to. And then we'll be able to do that rather quickly with our administrative team. And we should move up our meeting with the school councils that we've done in the past.
Tomorrow?
February. And then what the school committee, the additions and the cuts that I will propose to you, so it'll be the superintendent's proposed budget to you, then you will discuss those and recommend any changes, things you don't want cut or don't want added. We can do a second draft, and that really should be the process. It shouldn't take much longer than that.
With these dates, you have the confidence that we can be as thorough as we try to be?
I think we demonstrated a pretty efficient process last year together, I mean...
And we voted at the beginning of June. And that was two weeks earlier than we usually...
Right, but as you remember, we also, I also was out on a campaign to try to, you know, show the city what our school district could benefit from. And this year, that would be something that we wouldn't do because we'd know our, our number, and there'd be no change to that number. The mayor will give us the school budget and we'll build our budget within that amount of money.
I realize it's, I mean, it's a shift for all of us, and it's just, and, but that's the, that is a more standard procedure for building a budget across the state. And so, so we'll just have to adopt, adapt to that. I mean, I do think there are elements of it that are good. And I had informally gone out last year and done kind of this overview of the city budget and just to try to set, and now this actually codifies it. It's what other mayors in other cities do. And, and I, and I like the idea of, I mean, because usually by the time the city council sits down with you, you've are, it's like, it's, the train is long left the station and then it's, and so at least there's a, you're, everyone's together at the beginning of the process.
So when, when this says here that we will have this joint meeting before, before the commencement of the budget process, what, what is the commencement of the budget process? Seems to me we've already started talking about it, but that doesn't necessarily mean we're in the process yet.
Well, I think as the superintendent described, part of the budget process is the, the mayor giving departments sort of their budgetary mark, if you will, to then begin to work with it.
So you're thinking we'll have this joint meeting in February?
I'm thinking late January, as late in January as possible. Again, wanting to at least have, you know, House, or whatever, House One, whatever the governor's budget is referred to, so we at least have a number to work with. Because usually we're, we start the process, we're using the governor's number, and then the house's number, and then the senate's number, and then we're trying to, you know, so at least we'll have some kind of a concrete number that's put forward by the governor.
So for better or worse, you'll know what your school budget is in January, and then we just, we will work together on how we want to allocate that budget. Now, this will also coincide with the development of our district improvement plan, so I think the timeline is favorable this year as compared to last year.
The other part of the budget process that's a little bit different, or that's become more, more regularized is that as part of the, in addition to submitting the operating budget, there's also, I guess it's not on here, but there's also a capital improvement plan that gets submitted as well in the spring, so that that gets joined with the budget as part of the overall budget part. So again, we're, because of the, when the charter was passed, we've just completed a capital improvement process, I'm going to be putting forward a capital improvement plan for this current year, but then we're going to have to quickly pivot and start a 2014 plan, although we've done most of the planning for it, but put that together because I have to present that to the city council, they have to have a hearing on it, et cetera. So this first year's going to be a little bit challenging, but then I think once we get into the, the rhythm of it, it'll, it'll work out, so. So then the final piece, the only other piece that I highlighted in the charter was the election change, and again, there's just some, some changes regarding the number of signatures that are required for folks to get nomination papers. It, it really only affects the at-large candidates, it's still fifty for ward candidates, at-large candidates are now required to get a hundred signatures, the mayor is required to get a hundred and fifty signatures. Other than that, it's, it's pretty much the same. The only other piece in those transitional provisions, the city council is tasked with going through and doing a complete review of all the city ordinances to make sure that they're brought into compliance with the new charter. So that process is going to commence, the charter also commands the city council to form a elected official compensation review committee, which is going to be tasked with looking at issues around the compensation of elected officials and coming up with any proposals about whether that should be changed or increased, et cetera.
So higher, higher salaries?
One would assume it would be higher, but perhaps they'll recommend lowering the salaries, possibly, that's, that is a possibility.
Or making them more fair.
So the only other thing I would say as part of the charter is, given the changes now to the charter as it affects the school committee, it's probably wise for us to go through our committee rules to make sure that they align with the charter. So I don't know if that's something the rules and policy committee wants to kind of take up, or how, how you want to approach that. I know on the city council, the ordinance committee is going through the ordinances, but there just may be some issues around.
I actually had, I thought I was going to bring it up under new business, that we should be going through our bylaw. We usually, oh, we have to vote on them every January, the first meeting, which is next month. So I, instead of keeping us at, at new business, I will remind people that next month we vote on a vice chair, and we have to vote on the bylaws, and everybody should take a look through. I don't, I don't know that we really need to refer the whole thing to a committee, and I, I think it's probably pretty straightforward where it impacts. It will, we'll have to change the language about naming committees and, and things like that, but someone has to do something.
This is really off the track, but since she brought up the meeting and our voting and electing a vice chair and all of that stuff, it occurs to me that we were supposed to have an executive session tonight, and it's been postponed till January, and I just want to remind everyone that we can't have it before the meeting, it has to occur after the meeting because we reorganize ourselves at that first meeting, so.
Is that true when there's no changeover on the committee?
I think so, but I don't know.
I don't know if that has to be approved because we have nobody changing it.
What's the purpose of the, I did not, I don't quite understand what happened.
We just, we always approved our rules and elected our vice chair.
Every January?
Every January.
Okay.
We all just reconstitute ourselves, and so I don't know whether that is required. As she points out, we have no changeover in, in membership, but we should look at that and just, it just means whether or not we have the, the executive session before the meeting or after the meeting.
We may want to, I'm going to have to ask the city solicitor about that, only because it may be the, the annual election is a product of your rules. I think the, I think the charter envisions it as a vice chair is elected for the term, for the two-year term, but, but I can check on that, so. I know Stephanie's...
There were a lot of changes made to the charter that affected us that we didn't know were coming, and I wish that, this is me being cranky after the fact, but I wish that we... I realize that an invitation was extended very early in the process, but there were not continued, there were not repeated invitations, nor was it made clear to us that there would be changes to the charter that would affect the school committee in the manner that it has. I think, I think we would have, it would have been nice if we had been asked to send a representative specifically so that we would know what was going on, or if we had been informed what the suggested revisions were earlier so that we could...
I actually did attend one of those meetings, but many of these topics were not brought up at all. It was really about who should chair the meeting and how long the, the term should be, and I didn't know that any of these other changes were part of the charter at all until after the fact.
You know, again, all I can say is there was a committee, there was a, a group of citizens from every ward in the city that went through the drafting process, and then the city council had it, and there was extended debate, and the drafts were always available for people to look at and review and...
In retrospect, it would have been great actually if they had come to us and say, "These are some of the things, what do you think?"
We had a meeting, right? Told them what the effect would be on us, or we would have been able to react better if we had known, we just didn't know.
Yeah.
Until three weeks before.
And I think part of it too is that people were really focused on like, like those big issues, like, like should the mayor chair the city council, should the, you know, and, and maybe didn't focus on some of the more, the smaller details, but...
I went to one of the forums and brought all of these different points up because I did look through the charter, and I was surprised too that we didn't have more advocating as far as...
I can say that we did work with the Collins Center at the University of Massachusetts, and they, we brought, they had a consultant who tried to, basically this entire charter was rewritten, and, and they tried to look at practices in other cities that are more common, and they tried to incorporate those into this charter. So I realize some of these are changes for those of you who've been on the school committee a long time, but it actually aligns our school committee with other school committees in cities around the state, so.
Under prohibitions, just so people are aware, so they can think ahead for when they're not on the school committee, you now have to have a year after your end of term here before you can have any position in the city for which you're compensated. So I know in the past, people have moved from here directly to city council, they can't do that anymore.
Oh, no, you can definitely do that, that's an elected.
Yep, no, that's what it says, "Any compensated appointed..."
Appointed.
"No former member of the school committee shall hold any compensated appointed..." To one you follow?
Did not elected.
Okay.
Stephanie, what do you have on line?
Nothing, I said, nothing, nothing particular for you.
I can say the same prohibition appeal applies to the council and to all, it's a, basically it's a, it's supposed to prevent a revolving door where someone gets, you know, is an elected official and then gets appointed directly to a city job. I mean, that's, it's a fairly common prohibition in, at all levels of government.
For which there's compensation, okay.
Yeah.
I, I will tell you though that the place where that falls down is where we have educators that are sitting on this board and then, and they're precluded by state law, I think, from participating. We cannot have an educator from Northampton sit on the Northampton School Committee, but subsequent to your service on the school committee, if an educator were offered, from another district were offered a job in Northampton, this would preclude their ability to take that position for at least the year, which I think is minimally unfair, because we have an administrator in our, in our schools now who was a teacher in a former district, and she quit being on the school committee and came to work in our district, and I just think it's, so, there are, it's, it's one of those things, when you're building the big thing, there are unintended consequences.
But I think actually this complies with the state's ethics laws, which prevent, again, try to prevent the revolving door of, you know, the elected official who then the next day suddenly has a cushy job for the organization, so...
Right, and I would not want that to happen, I'm just saying, this is the case of unintended consequences.
No, no doubt, no doubt about it, yeah. Any other questions about that? Okay, so that's the update on the city charter. The next item is discussion. This is related to a charge for ad hoc committee for school start time, and I believe this is an item that the vice chair wanted to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could first propose, or make a motion?
Okay.
I make a motion that we, the Northampton School Committee, have no further discussion on high school start time until July first, 2013 or later, and that we notify parents and students that there will be no change in the start time at the high school for the 2013, 2014 school year.
Second?
So Mr. Zehowski has made a motion, seconded by Ms. Minnick. Would you like to elaborate or...
Well, I just think in light of all the things that we've heard this evening, from athletics to food service to now the new charter that we hear about the new timeline with the budget, we've also heard in previous meetings that this discussion's been taking up a lot of our time and energy in that with the changes that we're going to see in the new year for 2013, I think it's just wise that we take a break from this issue so that we can really concentrate on those things that are coming to us in the 2013 year, and also to realize that a change at the high school for a start time just might not be possible to take place for September 2013. So if we can't make that change for 2013, we do have a little time here to not move forward, and I guess maybe I would just ask the superintendent if that's true or not, or, I know that, I'll just, I know that when superintendent came back, the idea was that in September, we would be able to make a decision on school start time, and that would give him adequate time to implement any changes that we've asked him to do. I think now, being December and potentially January or February, it just seems realistic, unrealistic, that he would have enough time to put everything in place to make that change.
I'll respond to that if I can. Hey, you may remember last January, when we had the charge to bring proposals to you to be voted on in September, the idea was that it would be voted in September to give us a full year to implement it. And the time is needed for our staff, of course, to prepare to make this change, but also for the families to have enough time. We want to make sure that we communicate, and you can see from our last meeting that even if I felt that I communicated that we were going to extend the elementary school day, and I felt like I communicated that for a period of four or five months, there's still many families who claim this is the first they were hearing of it. So any kind of substantial change to our system will take time for us to prepare for, but I believe that also the families in our community need time to make adjustments and preparations for the change to their childcare and their routine for work. So I think that the year is not only for me, it's for the community as well. So I do agree that we should postpone this and consider if there is going to be a change in the start time, that it would be for September 2014 rather than 2013.
I am respectfully not going to vote for this. I am not as wed to the idea of having a start time that changes in September of next year as I am to finishing a topic that has been so prolonged, but I, I really feel like we are moving closer. I feel like we've learned something about how we could have been more efficient in our discussion, and I think last time we talked about charging a committee, and I think part of that was to offload some of the detailed work that we feel hasn't been done thoroughly enough to a group outside of the, the school committee so that they can come back to us, and we can be talking about what we need to talk about so that we're not the late school start time committee. And I, I don't presume what change we might make or when that change might be implemented, but I, I would, I would be, I, I can't be in favor of stopping the discussion where it is now. I think it would be disrespectful to people who have worked very hard on it, people who feel very strongly about it, in either way, I think that we need to answer the questions that have been raised and haven't been answered, and, and let the, let, charge a committee and let them move forward and then come back to us with their results.
And whatever time.
I, I would very much like to see us stop discussing this for right now while they're doing their work.
Sure, the timing. Just to pick up on Stephanie's point to clarify, your, your motion there does not preclude a committee from going forward and investigating these issues.
My motion has nothing to do with an ad hoc committee, it has to do with just a cooling off period for six months or better for this committee to not have to discuss it at a meeting, so that if an ad hoc committee is formed, they can gather information, and then perhaps in July, when we're not dealing with the budget, we have a little more time to maybe concentrate on this and not have to make it a focal point where we might have something more important at the time, like getting that budget in by April, knowing that the school start time might not happen until 2014, and the budget needs to be in by April 2013.
I mean, I, if, if the committee's going forward to investigate the issues, the charge becomes vitally important at that point, but I do, I, I like the idea, it sounds nice to me to say, "Let's focus on the other issues for a while while the committee is doing its job."
Ms. Minnick?
My point.
Mr. Boren?
I mean, what if it was more, we weren't going to discuss the issue until the ad hoc committee comes back with their report, so we can focus on those things, but if they come back in May, I mean, do we want to sit here and say we're not going to talk about the report that we just got? I mean, seems like that would be half the medium.
You didn't want us, your motion said we should, we wouldn't talk about it until when?
July first. I think that gives an opportunity for collective bargaining to have been finished, and there'll be more information at that point. The transportation contract, I'm not sure when that's coming up, Mr. McLaughlin?
That's, that's coming up, we're going to have to go out to bid in January.
This is something that... This is something that has always been tied into high school start time. It gives an opportunity for a lot more information to come out. We just talked about how the budget is going to be hard to deal with this year, because we've always waited until June, because we have more information. If we're talking about something in April or March without having those pieces of information, again, it's a lot of hot air that we could be talking about something else, because we know certain pieces of information will probably be out later in the year.
I hear your point, and I think that there's a way of having the committee go off and do their work and being able to come to talk to us, because there may be a way, depending on how all of these other pieces fit together, where we don't have to wait. And if we, if we are going to make a change, and I don't presume, but if we are going to make a change, that it maybe doesn't have to wait till September of 14. It's possible, if we can make all the pieces to come together, and we can talk about it enough in advance, that we can do it in January of 14. So, long as everybody knows in advance, and Jim Miller knows in advance in terms of scheduling things for sports, I, I don't want to make a presumption that we're delaying this by another whole year. Because I feel like, you know, in all of this process, we've already delayed what we thought was, what I thought was a decision for a year. So, I, I think that there, I, I don't want to see us put that kind of constraint on us and on the, on the work a committee might be able to do. Because I think a motivated committee might be able to go out and answer a lot of questions efficiently and effectively for us, and give us information to go forward with as we are negotiating and as we are looking at contracts. And if we can't use the information yet, then we can't. But if we can, then it's there for us. And so, I wouldn't want to presume that we shouldn't look at it and talk about it until a particular date.
Mr. Moore.
I'd like to say, first of all, I think that, I think we actually, while it's sort of an oxymoron to say, focus on more than one thing at a time. But I do think we can, we, we do pay attention to a lot of things all the time, and I think it's really not true that that's all we've paid attention to. I mean, I can think back to all the other things we've talked about over the years. The other thing about it is that actually, some of the things that people have urged us to pay attention to are things that are actually mandated by the federal government and which we really turn over to the administration to do, that we could, that would truly be hot air to spend a lot of time talking about, oh, what would it be? The park assessment, or something like that. Because that's coming, we can say whatever we want to say. So, I, I don't, I don't, I don't particularly weigh the, the attention thing as being all that important. What I am thinking, though, is that, one of the reasons this has been a longstanding issue is precisely because a schedule change connects to our bus contract. And in fact, one of the interesting things is that if we're having to put a bus contract bid out, we have to know what, what we're asking them to provide. And so, if anything, I think, and it is, and it is a feedback loop. In other words, as we found out with the longer start time for this, you know, that you can propose that, but then you have to work around to whether or not that's something that we can do. And then if it's something we can do, then we have, you know, so it's not like a straight line. And, and so with the bus contract, for example, three years ago, I was told we couldn't do this because we had a bus contract. Now, I'm being told, we can't do this because we don't have a bus contract. I mean, it seems to me that at some point, we have to say, no, really, what we have, we have to decide what we want to do, and then make the bus contract fit that. And this actually is an opportunity to do it, but as you noted about the timing, that would mean people coming up with a proposal that was, and again, I think one of the reasons people have been opposed to the later start time is because from their perspective, it's been really a pig and a poke as far as what, what would happen with busing? Would it cost more? Would it cost less? What, you know, what would happen with various athletic sports and things like that? The, and that's why it's something that has to be continually discussed. And I, and I, and I don't think it's really fair to say, well, we'll just take it away and then bring it back as though at that, it'll be any different. If it comes back, whenever it comes back, it'll be the same exact sort of difficult-to-untangle sort of process, because all the concerns are real, and they all need to be taken seriously. You can't do them one at a time, precisely because there, it is a network. It is a system. You know, they're all connected to each other. It's not this, and then this. It's not a building blocks. It's, it's a, it's a network. And so, I think, I think to try to sort of bind ourselves to not do something is, is really not the best way to, to either respect the issues that everybody has raised in terms of being able to discuss them in a meaningful way. And I think it also closes ourselves off from opportunity. That if, if we have, and again, for example, if this committee, which does not yet have a charge, were to come back with a proposal that, before January, we would be really disturbing ourselves if we couldn't talk about it in time to influence the, the writing of the bid for the buses. And so, so I, I do not think this is what we ought to do. I think, I understand what you're saying, and I think that we can achieve the necessary aim of paying attention to the things that are important for us to pay attention to without eliminating paying attention to some other things that are important for us to pay attention to.
Mr. Meyer, and then Ms. Minnick.
So, our charge to the superintendent was that he come back to us with proposals that had no cost. And I think what has struck me in the last few months is that we were thinking of monetary cost, and what we did not consider were the non-monetary, to us at least, cost to the community. And those are the costs that we have heard from our constituents, and we've heard people speaking during public comment. Those are the things that I, I feel that we need to quantify. I don't think this committee is convinced, without those being properly quantified, or a majority of this committee is convinced, that we can go forward. The other thing is that we can't go forward until the negotiations about a possible extended day at the elementary school are concluded, since that's a premise of the proposal three and proposal four that we have in front of us. The other thing that I think is that, like any public process, and as we just ably demonstrated, it's not until you are facing the results of the legislative decision that it gets your attention. And so, people have known this decision has been worked on for a long time, but again, the emails and the comments and, and the public response is focused when we get close to a decision. So, I think one of the difficult things about saying we will respond to information as it comes in is that if I'm trying to follow this process, when is that going to come in? When, when are, when are we as a committee going to announce it and make it clear to people? Well, now we've gotten something really important. It's a seven. Ooh, no, this is a nine. Okay? Now, we've, oh, we have a negotiation update on the bus contract. So, I think what I, I understand the concern about putting something away in a box, but at the same time, this is a date that the community can say, this is when the discussion is going to open up. And again, and this is when, if I need to weigh in, I'm going to weigh in. And to that extent, providing a date certain that all the tasks have to be done by that date, you know, deadlines tend to focus effort. So, whether you're an advocate for or against a start time change, you know that if you want your information to be weighed, it needs to be submitted a month prior to that date, so we can consider it before coming back to that meeting.
Ms. Minnick.
I think that also, I think that it would, it seems pretty clear to me that the superintendent, the business manager, and the transportation director will negotiate a bus contract with all of the concerns about start time in mind. I can't imagine that they won't negotiate a contract that provides us with the flexibility to implement as we need to going forward. And I also can't help but think that they will enter, that, that whoever does our negotiations will enter into negotiations with our teachers' association, keeping in mind what our goals are. And so, and, and I think that in charging a committee, an ad hoc committee, that might look at some of the issues around this matter, that people will keep in mind where, so I don't think that work will stop. As Downey has said, I think things will continue to progress, but it just gives us a time. It gives us a breather. It gives us a time where we don't have to wonder how many cars are going to be in the front lot when we get here on Thursday night, and how long the meeting is going to last. It gives the people who have come here as advocating both for or against it a chance to say, I know I don't have to show up yet again and try and, you know, make my point. This, it's, it really would be a, a time for a breather, I think. And it, I think that we would have the best, most information, more solid criteria for making a decision if we give it a little bit of time and let some people do the work that they need to do before we come back to make a decision.
One, I'm concerned that this discussion here is distracting us from our agenda item, which was to charge the committee. I wasn't, wasn't expecting this. But I also think it, we're automatically getting a little time, because we're going to charge a committee, and it's going to take them some time. But I don't want to tell them that it has to take, that, that we're going to charge them to go out and do their work, but they, they shouldn't come back to us until July. That just seems.
Disrespectful.
It seems like a, a contrived date, because we want to give this some rest. And I don't know that it needs that much. It needs some, because they have to go out and do their work. They don't even have their charge yet, but they have to go out and do the work. But I don't know why it would take them six months. No committee being charged like this should have to take six months. And I think that the more information we have before we go into the bus contracts, the more information they have in order to negotiate those contracts, because they might have to ask for more than one kind of a proposal.
Ms. Wall.
I think that we would be limiting ourselves to put a date on it. I agree with Ms. Pick and others that stated that we need the most information that we can have. And we're not going to be talking about it if there's no, no new information coming in. So, it's not, I mean, we are going to get a break, just a natural consequence, the break. I just think it's kind of disrespectful to have an ad hoc committee go and work on something, and also to all the people and the years and the process and everything else. It's going to have its own natural, natural break. I, I just think that we shouldn't be disrespectful to the process, to the people. And the ad hoc committee hopefully will find something that will address the issues of whether or not the rec department, I mean, how to work around the rec department, so the people aren't affected swimming and, and all of those. I'd like them, just to see them be able to do that and be creative that way. But I'd like them also to be able to feel like that they can come and talk to us. And as far as, you know, whether or not people come, and we wonder about how many people are in the parking lot, well, I don't know. I guess I don't wonder. I just figure if they have something to say, yay. But they can look at the agenda, which has to be posted online and downtown two days before, and they can decide whether or not they want to come, because it's going to be on the agenda or not on the agenda that night.
I don't, I don't see how this could come to us any earlier than, than March. I mean, if we're, if we're charging them sometime, maybe by the end of the year, they're not getting together until after the first. They're going to need a couple of months. They're not coming to us until at least the March meeting. And that's just to, to, to share their, the information.
I think it's important to say, you're talking about two distinctively different timelines. One is July 1st, and the other one is to have the committee get information to us before the bus contract goes out. If you want the committee to get information to us before the bus contract goes out, you're asking for two weeks. After the holiday, they would have two weeks to get it to us, because our bus contract goes out. So, March doesn't help that.
Well, the, the, putting the, the bid for proposals goes out.
Mm-hmm.
And then we get those back when?
What would be the timeline on the proposals?
To do the bus contract the way it should be done, from start to finish, from when the specs go out to when you make a decision, you're talking a minimum of three months. By the time the, the contracts are drawn, when you give the bus companies enough time to bid on it, they want, they're looking for reassurance in the contract. They're looking for clarity of what they want to bid on. The more variables you put and tag into the bus contract will do a number of things, either raise the price or dilute the number of vendors that really want to bid on something that's non-concrete. If something is concrete as you go out to specifications, the vendor truly knows. They can sharpen their pencil and come back with a really good price. If we don't know or we're not sure, we put a lot of if-then statements into the contract, their tendency is to come up with other creative alternatives, and mo, most of them lean toward higher prices. But you do need three months, and you really want to look at a vendor that you want to lock in a minimum of three years and possibly five years, because you're going to get the best prices over that duration.
So, I believe we discussed that, that, that we're going to be discussing this in budget and property, right? That. Or, so it would be my suggestion that we could refer to budget and property to talk about some of the different options that we might need to put into a, a proposal, because we don't know exactly, even if we decided we weren't making any changes for next year, if we're talking about a three-to-five-year contract, we need to be able to build into the, into a bus contract that there may be a change in the coming years in terms of what we're providing.
That's true.
So, I'm not sure that that particular date is actually, that matters. But in terms of not having enough time before the bus contract goes out, but I, I just don't see the purpose of waiting until July.
I'd like to call the question. Okay. So, in order to call the question, that's actually a parliamentary motion, so that requires a second from someone. So, and all those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. So, we'll call the question. So, now we're back to the main motion, which is a, a motion by Mr. Zehowski that would postpone further, no, go ahead, read it.
So, the motion reads that the North, the Northampton School Committee have no further discussion on the school's start time at the high school until July 1st, 2013 or later, and that we notify parents and students that there will be no change in the start time at the high school for the 2013-2014.
So, that's a motion that's been made and seconded. Any, well, the question's been called, so all, all those, okay, we're going to ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Ezra Housky.
Yes.
Mr. Alden Born.
No.
Ms. Blue Ball.
No.
Mr. Mike Flynn. Mr. Donnie Meyer.
Aye.
Ms. Lisa Minnick.
Yes.
Mr. Howard Moore. Mayor David Marquess.
No.
Ms. Stephanie Pick.
No.
Mr. Andrew Scholfo.
Yes.
The notes have it.
Five to four.
I've done one.
Okay, so now we're back to the original business item, which is the charge for an ad hoc committee for school start time. And I believe this is an item that you wanted to discuss or put on the agenda.
It was what we agreed to.
Okay.
Last meeting. I, I thought we were coming in and having a quick discussion about this. Should have known better. So, it, it's our job now, if we're, if we're having a committee, to charge the committee and to charge the mayor, who names the committee, with what we think the composition of it should be.
I just want to, I know we've had this discussion, but the, the school committee, the, the charter says that I will name members of all subcommittees of the school committee, whether special or standing. And if folks want to interpret that broadly, that that includes ad hoc committees of non-school committee members, that's an interpretation. I don't think it's exclusive. I think if this count, committee wanted to approve a committee, they could do it themselves as a group. I don't think it's exclusively my province, but that, I just, that's my interpretation of the charter. I believe the reference to the chair appointing members of all subcommittees of the school committee is a reference to, you have to be a school committee member to be on a subcommittee of the school committee. So, I don't think that that includes an ad hoc committee. But again, that's my, my take on it. So, I'm open. If you want to delegate that responsibility to me, that's fine. I'm just, I don't think de facto it's my responsibility.
It's interesting, it's, it's, it's great to me, because I. It's interesting, it's, it's, it's great to me because as you're, as I'm reading this and I hear how you're interpreting it, I can see how you can read it that way. It's not how I read it, so I don't know what the intention was. I agree with David.
I'm fairly certain that that, the intention was that the, it's more within the parliamentary structure of the school committee. But if we wanted to appoint an outside committee, I think the school committee could certainly do that together. But certainly this committee could be appointed by me.
When they call, when they use the word special for a committee, a special subcommittee?
No, I think what that means is, in a, in a, in a, in a parliamentary body, you have standing committees, like a rules committee, like a, but then you may have special committees of the school committee to look at a building or a charter or any of those kinds of things. It would, but again, you'd be talking about members of, members of the school committee.
Special committee's different than an ad hoc committee?
Not in my mind it's not because we don't have any special committees unless we appoint one ad hoc.
Oh, the special committees, I have tended to have-
No, no, no. You could have a special committee of the school committee.
We could have a special, but we should have-
Just because you haven't doesn't mean that's not with the charter.
Okay, but.
So what is a special committee of the school committee?
Honestly, if you'd like me to appoint the committee, it's fine. I just think that-
No, I'm, I'm really, I'm actually just looking for a, an interpretation. What is a special committee of the school committee?
I think what you're talking about is a special or a standing. A standing means that it's a standing committee that's established, it continues, like a finance committee, like a ways and means committee, rules and policy committee. But you may have a special committee of the school committee to just deal with one particular item, but then it goes away when that item goes away.
AKA ad hoc.
Right. No, but we could-
It's fine.
Where's our parliament going?
But it doesn't say ad hoc. Ad hoc would assume that it's, oh, well.
Well, it says, it doesn't say ad hoc because they're synonyms.
Yeah.
You're using all synonyms in legislation. It's special, very specific. It's special, it's specific.
That's true. Ad hoc means that.
Well, it's, it's, I, I, it's, again, if, I'm, I'm not trying to parse words, I'm just trying to keep a broader interpretation. But if, again, if you would like me to appoint that committee, that's fine. I'm happy to do that.
Yeah.
A special committee here, if you were to appoint a special committee, it would be, I mean, in my opinion, you could appoint like three of us to form the ad hoc committee. And that would be the special committee, that would be an idea, an example of a special reason to have for him to put another committee. We wouldn't be a standing committee. It would be an ad hoc, so he could, instead of asking him to form the whole entire committee, we could charge the whole process with forming, picking three of us or whatever to, to work with whomever and have that be the subcommittee that you pick. I don't, I don't think it's the ad hoc. That's a lot.
Let's figure out what the charge of the committee is and like what we want this committee to do, and then we can continue our discussion of what is his or what, you know, exactly what, what, what's special. That's fine.
I have some thoughts, I'm sure other people do too.
Please proceed.
I, I didn't come up with specific writing, wording, but I would like to charge the committee with looking at options for a later start, start time, not naming a specific, whether, you know, somewhere after eight o'clock. And look at all of the various questions that have arisen and whatever other ones they arise and ask the people for, that, let me say it differently. So for, as an example, if one of the consequences of a later start time is, one of the questions is, how will it, how will it affect teachers meeting with students after school, then they need to talk to the teachers at the high school to find out if they're available, when they're available, how that will work. If people are concerned about what happens with sports, then they really need to delve into that with, with people in the athletic department. If the question has to do with people being concerned that there's not enough time between school and sports and getting home, one of the things that they might want to be looking at, because a lot of people have asked me this question, is do athletic practices have to take as long as they're taking? Some people are saying, we have three-hour practices and why is that other teams don't meet for that long? And that might be something that they can look at. So I would like them actually to figure out what all of the issues are, as much as they possibly can, because nothing's going to be a hundred percent, that have come up, and we can give them a list of what's already been raised with us and whatever else might come up, and to be able to talk to the people who would be able to give them those answers. I don't think that they need to survey the community about whether or not we want to do this. I think that has been, has been done. Whether the surveys were valid or not, I think we've, at this point, heard from enough people to know that there's a huge range of opinion. But I think part of why things are so divided is because we don't have answers to the specific questions that people have. And I think it's the charge of the committee to go out and get those answers. And I would recommend that there be representation from school committee. I'd like to see a high school administrator. We have a principal and two vice principals. I'd like to see one of those be on the committee because I think that they can help get the answers to questions more efficiently. I'd like to see high school staff and athletics represented, and I think that we need to have people from the community represented. And with no disrespect to the student body, I think that, I agree with a comment that was made earlier, that when we poll the students, they are, they are responding not from a, they're responding with opinion more than from fact-based. And I, I don't think that that's where we should be going to for our information at this point. I think we've heard from a lot of students in both sides. So that's, that's the first of what I would say.
Any other comments about that or?
I have a question, there may be a comment. Brian, I think last time you mentioned that Mr. Zimbalist offered his services as a, sort of, to put together a survey. Given that, I would, I would disagree a little bit and say, I do think that there is a need to do a survey. And I would be interested in not just limiting it to people who would be affected by, not just high school students and families, but this is a community-wide issue, you know? What, what is the impact that is going to happen at the elementary schools, at the middle school? I would be interested in a survey that looks at that. I'd also be interested in a survey that takes a look at what are the issues that are impacting sleep? You know, we, we're making this assumption, as, as many people have said, that, well, if we change the start time, we're going to get more sleep. But I believe there are other things impacting kids' sleep. Someone said to me that if we change the school, we have to change the school's start time at the high school because my son or daughter, you know, not to out who the person might be, you know, has two hours of sports and then they have five hours of homework. Well, you know, I would say, maybe we need to take a look at how much homework kids are doing tonight because that's something that's impacting sleep. So I would want to see a survey that would help identify what the concerns are, rather than say to the committee, you identify the concerns and go figure out how we're going to fix them.
So I, I hear that and disagree with some of it and agree with some of it. I, I would like to not tell the committee what they need to go survey. I think that we could put together a committee that can figure out what information we have and what information we don't have. And if they, if the information they need to get is best obtained by doing a survey, then I think that they can come up with that. And if there's somebody who's expert in coming up with surveys and, and how to get that, do that efficiently and, and with validity, I think that's great. I don't think that we need to research whether or not kids are going to get more sleep. I think that research is done.
If I may clarify a little bit, I'm not saying the issue is whether kids will get more sleep. I would be interested to know what issues, or what issues are out there are impacting or preventing our kids from getting the amount of sleep that they want or need. Because I'm saying that there are a lot of factors that go into getting a complete and good night's sleep.
But haven't those all been outlined for us? We know that they have homework, we know they do sports, we know that their circadian rhythms don't let them go to sleep early enough, we know that they're-
Teachers meetings.
-distracted by other things, that they're, there are all sorts of things that play into that. I don't know that that, that impacts this decision anymore. I mean, to, to, to get more of that information, I don't know how that would change the work of the committee.
I think community-specific information on those topics would be helpful.
I also think the committee can figure out if they need that.
So our student rep wanted to go ahead.
So I try not to be too involved in this just because I know that I have an opinion and obviously people at my school, I, some agree, some disagree, just like in every community. And I don't want to be a non-biased representation. But I do think that, with all due respect, I, students aren't approaching this issue from one point. They, they really, we, we really are making an attempt to, to really, to really look at the issue in the same way that adults are looking at it. We're not coming in with, you know, some completely biased, like, oh, I don't want to change it because of just one thing and I, I can't look at any of the other things. We really are making a pretty solid attempt to, to really look at all the information because it's all out there and it's all pretty accessible in terms of looking at the research and looking also at what is really reasonable in terms of the budget and such. And so I, I personally think that it might be a mistake to not have some sort of student representation because it, it really is an issue that affects students primarily, first and foremost. This is a student issue. This is, this is going to affect us the most, and especially if we're considering doing it quite soon, doing it for next year, having, having a student involved. Because one of, one of the issues is that sometimes we kind of feel like, oh, it's just like an issue, it's been going on for a long time, we've been seeing for, you know, for years, like every, every once in a while it'll come up, then it'll come down, and we just, you never really know when, when it's actually going to come to a decision. And so students just kind of feel like, oh, well, you know, I'm, I'm not really going to get that involved. And not, not that there haven't been students who are involved, but just making sure that there is someone to represent if you're forming a committee that it seems will come to, will be the main source that you're going to go off from after, after the committee comes, comes to this, this school committee meeting. From there, we've, we will have kind of clarified what the issues are. And so that would be ideally the endpoint.
As to the composition of the committee, I think that we've had a number of ad hoc committees, I'm afraid to, which-
It's fine.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Ad hoc committees in the past, which included teachers from, or teachers and/or administrators from all levels in the district, parents, I think it might be appropriate to include students, community members, school committee members, all of those people seem like respond, and, and I think that there may, I, I don't know if there's any specific interest that we should look to include, whether it would be, I, I mean, I, I can't, I can't think of one. In other committees, it's been important to include someone from the Department of Public Works because what, what we're talking about might affect how they do their job. So that kind of, I don't know if there's someone that we should be including, that we haven't, that isn't normally included, but I would suggest that we think about whether we, there's someone in municipal government, or someone in the business community, or someone specifically who needs to be included. And I would respectfully suggest that it would make sense to have our transportation coordinator look, possibly sit on this committee. By the same token, I understand that there are a lot of people who need to do a lot of research, and I also want to be respectful of, of our teachers and administrators' time. So I don't want to commit the transportation director to, you know, bi-weekly meetings for the next four months if that's not what she wants to do. And I don't want 15 individuals from the subcommittee all contacting her at different times. So I would like to, so maybe she doesn't have to sit on the committee, but she should be available to the committee, but with some limits on, so anyway, those are my thoughts about who's going to be on the committee and how it should be structured. And I do have just the beginnings of a suggestion for a charge, if somebody wants me to read that. I suggest that we charge the committee with, to investigate the implementation issues surrounding a later start time at the high school, including effects on the budget, school start and end times district-wide, and any related topics, i.e. sports, transportation, et cetera. And the committee should present its findings along with one or more proposals for consideration by the school committee.
Mr. Meyer?
Difficulty with this process is that we've just gone through many meetings where a five-minute difference, a 15-minute difference was the difference between night and day, where, where entire activities were going to be thrown away or ruled out, where, you know, we were, we were really, when I introduced my five-minute tweak, right, that was cause for another meeting, for me to be admonished by my fellow council member. And, and so I guess my issue is, are we tasking them to look at 8:15, 8:20, 8:25? I mean, I think for us to send them away and say, come back with a later start time, is, they're going to come back with, with what, considering what? Because there is a tremendous difference between 8:00 and 8:30. There's a, there's even a, a pretty significant difference between 8:10 and 8:25. And so I'm not sure what we're charging them with if we haven't even, a majority of us committed to even a window, even saying later than 8:00, later than 8:10.
And, and I'm happy to use this just as a starting place and let people revise it, but I should say that I didn't specify in here, but I think we should specify right out of the starting gate whether we want this to be a no cost. And Downey said earlier that we instructed the superintendent to come up with a no-cost proposal, but we didn't anticipate the human costs, so the, the costs to families. So the question is, do we instruct them to come up with a proposal that does not actually affect our budget?
Sorry, Mr. Moore, sorry, Mr. Moore.
I have a couple of points about the cost thing. I think, you know, currently, our current schedule has costs, financial and personal and, you know, to, to families and to all sorts of things. So, so to, to sort of pretend that any change that has any costs whatsoever to anything right now would be bad is kind of missing the point that our, the status quo has costs, which we've all, which we all shoulder. And so, so I think that, I think, I agree, I think the, the financial one, I think we're pretty clear on because that's pretty easy to define and pretty straightforward. And precisely because the later start time stuff has nothing to do with saving money. So, so it's not part of that package. But I think to, to say, well, we can't have any costs anywhere in what currently exists is ignoring the reality that our current system has lots of costs. And so I think, I think it's fair to let a committee look at the various considerations and try and, and the committee, that's why you have a committee, is try to figure out how to balance those costs because there will inevitably be some of those kinds of costs anywhere, just like there are now with our current setup. I mean, you know, well, anyway, there's, you can make a list, it's pretty quick and easy. In terms of problems with our transportation system, which has a lot of costs associated with, under our current perfect transportation system, which nobody wants to touch, right? There are a lot of costs that people routinely talk to me about. And the same as, and very similar to the, sort of like the homework. And even though homework and eliminating waiting after grade school isn't anywhere on anybody's priority list, it still comes up all the time, every time you have any conversation about the schools. So I think it's something that's worth looking at. But, so that's the first one is. The second one is, we, you know, a lot of the polling stuff, we know sort of for and against. And we've heard a lot of arguments for and against, but there's a real difference between arguments and reasons. In other words, you can be for something for one reason and come up with dozens of arguments to support you, but none of them are really the reason you're for it. You can be against something for one reason and have dozens of arguments against it, but none of them really are the reason you're against it. And I think one of the, so, so this is sort of in between the discussion that you two were having about the need for information gathering on the part of the committee. I think the, the committee doesn't need to go find out sort of what a lot of the factors are because those are the arguments. But they do need to figure out which of those arguments are actually reasons that people, you know, that matter to people, and which of them are arguments that people have come up with because they seem persuasive, okay? And there's a big difference between the two. And I think we all know that, and I think it would be really valuable for the committee to be able to do some information gathering to sort of sort out which of these arguments are the things that are actually reasons versus, again, good convincing sounding arguments, but maybe not really the reasons, things people really care about. And that's, other, I, I agree, there should definitely be, I don't want the committee to be too big, but I think it's really helpful if the committee has students on.
Mr. Moore?
In terms of a charge, I mean, my, my concern is that-
In terms of a charge, I mean, my, my concern is that as a committee, we're still going around in circles about this a year from now. And I don't think that's good for anybody. And Mr. Zehausi came up with the idea of this timeline. I'm wondering if there should be a timeline in the charge that says this committee needs to come back by April 1st and we're going to, we're going to vote on it by May 1st. I mean, I just, it seems like this is something our community, we should be able to figure out. This isn't a, um, you know, ballistic missile treaty involving 50 countries. It's a school start time issue in a small town in New England. So let's get it figured out and either do it or don't do it, but don't let it just go on for another three years or something. It's kind of getting, honestly, it's starting to get a little ridiculous, I think. So that would be my hope is to have a specific timeline when the, when this committee is going to come back with a report and then we're going to vote either to make a change or not make a change.
Um, yes.
Ditto to that. Um, and, um, it's just, I, I'm very happy with the language except for one thing that you said in there is that I think last time we talked about how we would not be having any discussion about the length of day at the elementary school. And I don't think that the committee should be looking at either because we haven't brought this to negotiation and that's where that discussion needs to happen. I don't, I don't want to be encouraging people to have that discussion outside of negotiation before we have done that. I don't know if people, if, if that seems right or not, but.
I think you make a good point. I, I guess I was.
Because if this committee were to come up with, we've got this great plan, but that's what you have to do, that's putting the pressure on the, on the, on the union to do exactly the way I talked about last time. I don't want, I don't want that pressure in our negotiation. I don't think that's right.
But I hardly think that they can come to us with a proposal unless and until they hear from us what the result of our negotiations has been because clearly it affects start and end times, which affects transportation, which affects.
I think they could do an honest amount of the work, but I don't think it's for them to have that piece of the discussion.
And I'm, I wouldn't, then I just X out my, my thing here because I, you can't ask them to bring you a proposal if you can't let them, and so maybe they can't bring us a proposal until, so Alden's request for a date, they can't possibly be charged with bringing us something until they've heard what the results of negotiations are.
And just on the point that, that Downey made in terms of what time are we asking them to look at, I, I think it's for them to figure out what the best time is going to be in terms of what's optimal for stuff and sports and all the other issues. But we know that, I mean, what we started with was after 8 o'clock and whether it's 8:00 or 8:10 or 8:15 or 8:20, I think that they can figure out if, what the differences are there. We, we haven't done it here in our meetings. That's why we're, we're.
Mr. Meyer.
I just don't see how they can go out and ask, what is the effect of a start time change? Or how can we prevent a start time change from adversely affecting you or trying to quantify those things if you don't know what they're asking about? They don't know what they're asking about. Do they, are they asking, are they asking students? I mean, you can't fix a problem unless you know what the problem is. And I'm not sure that without some sense of what the potential start time is, how can they fix the, the problems that will be created by it? How would they avoid them?
I think that what we've heard from people who have not been in favor of a start, of a later start is that because of, of reasons or whatever the word, however it was used.
Real reasons.
They're, they're not happy because their kids won't be able to meet with teachers or they won't be able to do their sports or they're not going to be home for dinner or they're not going to have enough time for homework. I think that they need to explore those all, that, you know, if something, if something changes here, what happens to the rec department and the swimming for adults and, um, what happens to classes at Smith and all the, all the issues that have come up. They need to find out if having the later start time really impacts those things the way that's being brought to us because some of us are seeing it and some of us aren't.
To make it minimally impact.
How can we do this? How, what, what time are they going to be able to come up with and work with sports and all those other things? Is there a plan that can work that will not?
Has the least amount of impact.
That has the least amount of impact.
To do my simple analogy, I agree with that, um, that it's like you don't announce what time you're going to leave for, on the trip down to visit the in-laws. What you do is you ask them what time you're, you need to arrive by, you get the window. When will be too early, when will be too late? And then you work back. And I think, I think if you start with the times, you do exactly the way this process has worked. Propose some times and find out that people have concerns about what it'll cost. If you start the other way and say, well, when would you, when would be the last time you can do this and why? And because then the why, and, for example, the, the meeting with teachers after school, you know, that could be substituted by a meeting with teachers before school. It's interesting, a lot of people, and that's why I'm not sure what are the reasons and the arguments because if you have a kid who plays sports, very frequently they would have to miss some practice or some competitions in order to meet after school with teachers on every day of the week, but they have no trouble meeting with teachers weekly. But, you know, it's not like every single day. And the reason is because, well, people find ways to do it. And, um, then my other point is, I really support what you were saying about, I think the charge has to be open and whatever committee has to be able to look at all the pieces of the puzzle. I, I hope that a committee would be really cognizant of the fact that some of those pieces are potential, you know, sort of conditional upon further things. And so they would present several proposals that, you know, one, if this set of facts were true, much like we do in all the rest of our planning where we have one proposal and then if we don't get that much money from the state, another proposal, the same sort of thing with if we get this, then this is what we could do. This is the best thing we could do taking into everything else. If we can't get that, then this is the best we could do given all these various factors. I think they need to be able to put, have that kind of flexibility. Again, one time I was talking about this about a year ago and you said something like zero-based budgeting. And I think that that would be really good if they, if this committee could do a sort of zero-based scheduling where they really could look at all the stuff we're trying to put in today and try and figure out a schedule that would work the best for putting that stuff in. Because our current schedule is more like we have a schedule based on a bus schedule and then people have really worked really hard to get a lot of stuff in, but we still have a lot of stuff left out. There's a lot of pockets of stuff that everybody works around that nobody likes, you know, they're just there because. And, and if you could start at the bottom and start with trying to actually make a schedule that answered a lot of the concerns that, you know, again, people, when you, it's funny, when you talk about start time, very quickly the conversation comes to somebody talking about how long their elementary school student spent standing on the sidewalk waiting for the bus after school or how their elementary school student rushes in and is late for the first two minutes of class in the morning. Or, you know, it's just like, wait a minute, we aren't talking about this, but we are because it's all connected. And I think that's why your very open charge is a good thing.
I think that, I, I do understand what Downey's saying, but I also think that to, for us to, to predetermine a specific start time is dangerous. But, but I, I don't, I'm, I think it will be difficult for a committee, but maybe the idea is that we say, you know, start with the most and then figure out if you can't do it, then work back five minutes and then if you can't do that, work back five minutes. But I also am concerned that at some point in time we're going to get to, we can start school, high school at 7:55, but is the incremental gain worth the pain that will be inflicted on the community if they determine that there is pain? If they determine that that's going to affect elementary schools or families or whatever it is? I think that somewhere along the way, they need to have some manner of weighing what the, what, what the costs are versus the benefit of it and is there some point below which we can't go?
Right. I'd like to see them do that in a way that wasn't done with our current schedule. Because I don't think anybody weighed the various costs and benefits of our current schedule.
Or asked the committee.
And so, so I think you'd be asking the committee to be, to be doing that, you know, to be doing a humane, you know, intelligent job of, of figuring all, of, 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 again, trying to see if you could do a better schedule than the one we've got now in all sorts of ways, some having nothing to do with start time.
So, uh, any other comments about the charge? Do we have a sense of the size of this committee?
Oh, it's getting bigger all the time.
I, I just mean the numbers of people.
Would you read your charge again?
It wasn't really totally complete, but investigate the implementation issues surrounding a later start time at the high school, including effects on the budget, school start and end times district-wide, and any related topics, i.e. sports, transportation, teacher help times, whatever. The, the subcommittee should present its findings along with one or more proposals for consideration by the school committee.
Could I offer the amendment of EG instead of IE?
Yes.
Okay. And now I would move that we accept that charge or make that charge.
So there's, so you're seconding.
She already moved it.
Seconding.
I didn't really move it. I just said that I had suggested language that somebody could work with, but.
Whatever she threw in.
I see it better. I want to hear it slower.
I would feel better if we had agreed upon a charge for the committee.
We have to vote. I'm going to ask you to read it one more time.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to read it again, but.
Leave out the whatever.
We have to vote.
We have to vote, I want her to read it.
Investigate the implementation issues surrounding a later start time at the high school, including effects on budget, school start and end times district-wide, and any related topics, e.g. sports, transportation, teacher help hours, et cetera. The committee should present its findings along with one or more proposals for consideration by the school committee.
So you still have in there about basically length of day district-wide?
School start and end.
I'm uncomfortable with that piece. And the only other thing I would say is that they can't come back to us by a, a certain month sometime in the spring.
They can't come back to us with a proposal until.
Yes.
Until they have the information about length of day and that length of day thing comes after. So I'm expecting that they're, that we're charging them and they're going to go off and they're not going to be able to come back, at least until negotiations are completed, whenever that is. It may be after July 1st, it may be April, it may be next September. I mean, you know how long are negotiations taking?
Implications, you know, the implications. They can say, you know, this won't, this, this won't matter. There are other plans, you know, in other words, there are ways to do this with a shorter day, a longer day. We're not going to Finland and getting a shorter day. But, um, but, 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 you know, that there, that there are, they may come back saying the implications are, you know, once we've looked at all this, that this is actually a key piece. Or they may come back saying, you know, this is a piece that could be fit into whatever else we do. You know, I don't know.
I, I just don't want them going out and polling elementary parents about whether or not we should have a shorter day. I don't think that would be appropriate. I mean, a longer day, sorry.
No, it's only will be yes or no, it'll be the implications of.
So if we have two school committee people.
Somebody from this committee is going to be on that subcommittee.
That's what I said, as long as we have two school committee people on there, that we've got somebody who's going to remember to say, we can't do that.
Well, you know, I mean.
I think, go ahead.
They, they could start work on the impact on some of the issues with the whole issue with the, it's only to know how long the elementary school day is, right?
Yeah.
Possibly. The only reason they have to discuss is to talk about transportation. Possibly, like you said, it might not really affect them that much.
Are you done, Mr. Moore?
I'm, I'm quite done.
Excellent. So was there any amendment to the motion or?
Are you going to add when they need to come back to us by?
Yes.
Would you like to add that?
That'll be the next amendment.
That they're going to come back to the school committee by?
Return date.
I wasn't going to, you can make, I, I guess I should make, should I make this as a motion? I move that the charge for the committee be what we already said.
Okay, and?
Seconded.
Second.
If somebody wanted to amend it, you could make a motion to amend. I'm not putting the time by which they should return to us for the simple matter that I don't know when negotiations will be completed and I believe that that's imperative to have done before we can have them come back to us. However, I may state in my case.
I would like to propose an amendment.
Yes.
That it be phrased as, with a target return date, report date of, um, adding up the days here.
Can I perj?
No, I was thinking it could, should be earlier so it has time to sit on the table because at a time when we won't be actually taking it up and discussing it because we'll be too busy. So I'm thinking, I'm picturing, um, the 1st of April, just for a lot of humorous reasons as well, but.
Budget in April.
Right, but that it'll, but the, the report will be there. We won't deal with it because we'll have other things to deal with, but people can read it, people can, you know, weigh in on it. And then, and then subsequently during our summer term, we could deal with it. So I was going to say, so I think April 1st.
Second.
Okay, so there's an amendment to the main motion.
It would be a target date. So in other words, if they're not done yet or if they're done earlier, good.
Fine, do it if any time.
You know, I mean, I don't.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to amend to add an April 1st target date. Any discussion of that amendment? Hearing none? All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, any abstentions? The ayes have it, so the main motion is amended.
So then could it read for the merians, the committee should endeavor to, endeavor by April 1st to present its findings along with?
It's not to, to present so much because we're not having a meeting on April 1st.
No, but to.
To deliver. Is that what you said? To deliver? Would you prefer that language? Somebody just tell me what to write.
Doesn't mean we're discussing.
By April 1st.
I don't remember. I presume that we wouldn't have time to discuss it.
Although it, unless you want something, it doesn't have time to meet a lot of people.
You're going to vote at the budget, not in April, but by April. I have to submit my budget by May 1st, so I need to have it submitted 30 days prior to that. So they'll be voting in late March.
Yeah, we'll probably have a special meeting.
So you won't be spending the month of April debating the budget.
So endeavor is a lovely word, use it.
Excellent. So the revised language.
I always try, I always try to get that word in there.
Should I spell it with the extra U or?
Yeah.
We still have to do the business.
Could we?
Vote on this report.
Could we, um, could, uh, so.
As amended.
As amended, is there any discussion, again, I'm asking for guidance on the number of, how many, the size of the committee?
Well, let's just vote on its charge and then worry about its composition.
Okay, fine. All those in favor then of the adopting the final charge of the committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, any abstentions? Okay, I believe the ayes have it, so the charge of the committee is adopted. Again, I would ask for guidance on the composition of the committee. Despite our disagreement about the interpretation of the charter, which I will say, by your interpretation of the charter, I could, if you read it literally with your interpretation, I could appoint Steve Harold to the Budget and Property Committee because you're pre-
Right.
You might decline.
No, but the bylaws, the charter controls, the charter overrules the bylaws.
No, the charter doesn't define the, the committees are standing committees and our bylaws do.
Okay, so then there's a standing committee. Okay, interesting. All right, well, I just, you're, I just, again, I think the, I'm fairly certain of the interpretation, but whatever you want, I'll do whatever you would like me to do. So, but I would like to at least have a number.
First canon of statutory interpretation is not to interpret in a way that produces absurdity.
Okay. It's nothing absurd. Okay, so what's the, um, what's the people's thought of the size of this committee?
You have to have an odd number so they have definite kind of vote.
I see it easily being a sort of committee that would have subcommittees in terms of investigating the various implications as according to the charge, you know, that it might not be the whole committee investigates each implication, but the two or three people investigate.
Somebody on the committee could go form a group to, to do something that's, of people who aren't on the committee.
Oh, they could, that's true.
It's true, although then you're, you still would have some issues about public meeting laws.
It was appointed, really.
Yeah.
So.
And they say, okay, I'm going to charge, I'm going to take the, the, the job of finding out about such and such, and two people do that and they get some other community members to help them when they have a meeting, because other people don't necessarily have to come, but they've helped do the work for the. but they've helped do the work for the representative on the committee to present.
As long as the discussion of the work is done in an open, public meeting, that's a full cap.
Two school committee members. Two high school students. Yeah, because one is going to be lonely. Maybe, maybe has sports and can't come to the meeting or whatever, I don't know. One teacher from each grade building level. So one elementary, one middle school, one high school, or administrator, one, one teacher or administrator from each level. Two parents of whatever level, two community members, and one somebody else, member of the business community or other city employee. She would probably shoot me if she is even watching this meeting, but I mean, Susan Wright would be wonderful on this committee.
Yeah, she can't do that. She can't do that. We're going to be putting together a city budget between now and June 1st, so...
But I mean, so if there's someone that you can envision in municipal government who would be good on this committee, that's fine. If not, someone from the business community who has interest, or you can eliminate that person and just leave it at two community members, you can add another parent, or, I just threw that out there, that's, I'm done.
How about a city councillor, just one city councillor? How about one city councillor? Just throwing that out there.
The only reason I wouldn't, I would not, I would not exclude a city councillor. The only reason I didn't list a city councillor is because I believe as ward representatives and at-large representatives, we represent the constituents in the city.
I was thinking more of special interests as we're going through and we're looking at the rec department and the Smith College and sports, just more or less just being able to put in the input for this, for any other special interest for the city.
So maybe the rec department?
I think the rec department would be a good idea to represent their interests.
So maybe the rec department director is the, is a...
Do you still wish to go or not include?
Whatever. I was trying to keep it at around 10.
It should be an odd number.
For the committee, I mean, it seems like this late school start time group that has formed has a lot of energy and is very interested in seeing this issue move forward. So why not have them put forward the name of three or four people that they'd like to see on the committee? Just an idea.
I think people on the committee are going to need to have time. So I'm not opposed to having a student on the committee. What I, what I was saying before is I don't want to be polling students for their opinions about how to do this, but students are busy with homework, and I'm concerned about how they're going to have time to go out and do what needs to get done. So I'm, I'm fine with having a student on the committee, I don't know if we need to. I'd rather have two high school teachers if the two are interested. Just want, that's my thought.
Raise your hand.
We also have to figure out how we're going to find, how to put this out there to get interest, or could be someone from Smith College even.
Go ahead.
I, I don't, I mean, I don't think there's any problem with like having more than one high school teacher instead of a student if there aren't as many students who are. I was just saying that it might be just like on principle having it open up.
Student perspective.
Yeah, that, that's all, that's all I was really thinking about.
So have the student perspective.
But yeah, definitely another, high school teachers, because it is mostly a high school issue, even though elementary and middle school have some perspective on it, they, high school teachers definitely probably have the most perspective into this issue to some extent.
The committee is, has, is free to revise my list, I was just throwing out a suggested starting point. Secondly, I would simply say that in the past, for varieties of committees that we've had, we have put a press release in the newspaper, asking for volunteers, listing what the charge is, and what we estimate the time requirement will be, and asked for people to submit their names if they are interested in serving on the committee.
I think that's a good...
As far as I'm concerned, that's fine. You need to give them a date by which they have to reply, they can email whomever, and then you can make the decision for those people. And when I listed two parents, two community members, you know, I think that if the group of concerned parents that have been before us wants to submit their, you know, their names are the names of others, that's, you know, that's great. And it doesn't, I specifically gave them enough room so that there were several representatives that could be there, people who are for it, people who are against it, or people who are open-minded, that would be ideal, if we could have some people who hadn't yet made up their minds about the whole thing.
Are there any, guys?
And, and again, I suggested that you might have a central office staff person, but maybe just forget that and have the principal at the high school or a teacher at the high school, and I, you know, whatever. You, you just don't want the committee to be too large, you have to have enough people to do the work, but not so many that it's unwieldy to manage. And you have to make sure that they have some idea of what the time commitment is so that they don't, I said it in the superintendent lab, someone will drop off of the committee because it will get too, too involved. So you need to plan for some attrition, but you also should look for people who are prepared for the commitment that they are about to take on.
Okay, so, okay, so we can certainly put the call out to the community. I don't know where we are in terms of these numbers and the different slots that you want. We have the rough outlines of it. I, I can work with the superintendent to go through the applications that come in.
It's a lot of people she...
Try to plug people into those different slots.
If you're busy, I'd be happy to do it with you, however you want to do it.
Okay. But do we, do you have a list, does someone have a list of what's been described here in terms of this competition?
I do.
I have.
Okay. Okay.
I have the list.
Excellent. Okay, so, okay, so I, we'll certainly put the word out. I don't see Barbara here tonight, but we can certainly get the word out that this committee's being formed and folks can submit a letter of interest or an email of interest.
Can I go online? Can you, on the schools web, you know, the way it goes, everything goes out to Facebook and on the website and everything else?
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
We can do that.
We can send an email to all schools personnel, and I don't know if the committee wants to go ahead and, or maybe we should just say that those of us who are interested in serving on the committee should contact the mayor. If nobody shows up, then he gets to pick.
There's going to be somebody there who understands something about process and thresholds and minutes ticking and all the rest of it, and he wants maybe more.
Okay, so, all right, so that concludes this discussion. The next item on the agenda is the Business Managers' Report.
Average version? Quick version?
He was kidding, sort of.
My line on financials. In the narrative portion of the report, you're aware that we're still scheduled for a circuit breaker audit. I know the Fed Director talked about another audit coming in, but that's for a whole different purpose in the year of 2014, 15. We're headed for a circuit breaker audit in the next few weeks. You also heard tonight some good information from both food service and athletics in regards to where they stand right now in their financial status and how they are progressing. In your package, you also have the financial statement, again, listed by the DE, DOE codes, and listed out the way the budget had been voted. Just one note, the overall, in the report, we include most of the special education out-of-district tuitions. The overall, the net of special education funds are overdue to the additional students requiring outplacement services. I'm working with Lori Farkas on an ongoing basis as we continue to look at the outplacements and the amount of dollars that we encumber for those services. One other area, student information system. I think most of you know that we're currently looking at a new student information system. Our Starbase system will no longer support our student database after June 30th, June 30th of 2013. There are a lot of different companies out there in the marketplace that provide this type of service, so we've been calling them in, asking them to show a presentation, have one ready for the entire committee. There's a fairly large committee that's looking at the system to see if the new system will meet our needs now, today, next week, and into the future. We're also trying to include how this pulls in other databases. And Andrew, you mentioned something about the cards. We also talked about the Free and Reduced, we talked about the My School Bucks, we've talked about the Versatrans, and we've talked about how well all those systems will talk with each other, and that was one of the criterias as we go forward with this new student information system. At this moment, we have two more vendors I believe we're going to be looking at and having them come in. We're hoping in the next 60 days that we should finalize what system and what vendor we'll be going with. That'll be made by the committee and made on specifications to meet our needs. Most of them are pretty much going to be in the same ballpark for cost, but we're looking at it based on our needs as being the primary focus of where we want to be. So the better the information we get out of the system, the better data we'll be able to report, and I think overall that will serve the district well.
Is the 2013 date driven by changes in what the state is requiring from our information system, or is that expiration of our current license?
That's the expiration on the current license. Starbase system had been bought out.
The expiration of our system.
Of the system, yeah.
I didn't hear you.
The expiration of our system, not the license. Starbase is over.
Starbase is over, yes. Starbase will be obsolete on June 30th, yes.
And I'm wondering, is this, is this a purchase that could be in any way coordinated regionally with other school systems?
No, I don't think it would. I think at Budget and Property, we heard that because of the sensitivity of information and needing it to be right here in our...
But I'm saying, just in terms of bidding for a product.
And does the collaborative not have licenses for our student management systems?
Right, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying have it all housed on a single server.
No, I know what you're saying. I just, I don't know if that's possible. We have a deadline, our system is over with, and we have to have a new one by July 1st.
And I understand all these ones you're looking at are similar price, how do they compare with what we had budgeted when we thought we were continuing with Starbase?
We never thought we were, because for the last two years, we knew it would sunset June 30th.
Okay, so we budgeted appropriately.
Right, right, right.
What we're finding is even the current system we have right now, what's out in the marketplace is significantly better than what we've been using for the last five to 10 years. I'm saying 10 years because I'm thinking that's how long this particular package has been around.
I'm like group wise, right?
Yeah.
Good mark. Can you tell me who, who forms the committee? Who comprises the committee that's...
We have three or four administrators on the committee. We have two people in the central office on the committee. I've been attending the meetings. All of the technology staff that's on there, our student database information person, Cindy Kelly, we have Jen Towler, who's our registrar of students. We also have the users in the building, so all the administrative assistants that have access to the system and are the users are also sitting in to ensure that it meets all of our needs from their perspective. So we're going from a user perspective back up.
Perfect, thank you.
Second page on my Business Managers' Report, I had presented to the administrative team at our last meeting, the ALP team, and I've divided this budgetary discussion up into two different areas, one being the FY13 budget status, and for all of you, I'll just quickly read through it. In light of the latest information from the governor's office, a budget freeze, and I know all of you were on that, NPS All did receive that email that had come out letting you all know the status and the things that were frozen, and why we were, we were, I can't talk well tonight. It's tongue twister. The email that was sent out, I know all of you have. The governor has the fiscal powers to institute this year the Chapter 29 9C cuts. These cuts are at the discretion of the governor to use when projected revenues are known to be less than the spending. The governor must act to ensure that the budget is brought into balance per the state constitution. The authority given to the governor under Section 9C is considered to be extraordinary and is to be used in time of fiscal emergency. As we know it right now, the only piece that has a quantifiable number is circuit breaker that will, we will be impacted for right now. That could be between about 5 and 7 percent, and so that ranges between about $24,000 to $34,000. That could be reduced this year. There also still remains another real possibility that there could be further cuts this year in the Title I, the sped entitlement and other federal grants, and it's subject to part of the discussion between the Department of Education and the federal government as they discuss over technicalities of the financial agreements and how federal entitlement monies are distributed and how they're awarded during the course of the year. So there's a little bit of haggling going on right there. That won't be known for another couple of months. The FY14 process, which I know a lot of us are talking about because of budget property, we're talking about because of the busing and a number of other issues, we really need to proceed with caution when we do our FY14 plan. We'll be looking at a lot of things ahead of the curve that we've always been used to, stretching out through April, May, and June, and in some cases, you know, still not making decisions till June. Some things will still be a little bit gray, might not be as well-defined as we've had them in the past, but as it's been voted by the charter, we need to have a budget into the mayor's hands, so we need to act a lot quicker this year, and our overall timeframe is compressed. Based on some of our previous discussions, the mayor has to present by May 1st, which means we really need to, on my notes, have to vote, accept, and be able to pass on to the mayor by the first meeting in April. I know some things might change where we might have to have a special meeting, but to put our budget in, within the mayor's hands to be part of the overall city budget, we might even have to do that a little bit earlier. So when we look at our budget going forward, we're going to have to make some assumptions with our district improvement plan, our school improvement plan, work with the guidelines that the mayor puts forward with us, work with what the governor has out there. We have a lot of other interesting and sensitive topics of negotiations. Bus contracts, we don't know quite where we're going to be with utility costs. Same thing with grants and revolving accounts, we're not sure how that's going to look going forward. We're going to have to make some assumptions in those particular areas because of how we're building our budget this year. And you also heard tonight how close athletics was at this time of year compared to last year. They are only floating a $600 positive balance, and food service is projecting because of the new regulations and other things that they could still be in, in the red this year going forward because of some of those regulations. So we have a lot of things to consider, and we really only have January and February, maybe a little bit of March to do this in. So at most, we have about two and a half months to have all our meetings with Budget and Property, have discussions with the rest of the committee, and put together a meaningful budget to put into the mayor's hands.
Any questions about the finance, Business Managers' Report? Okay, we'll move on to Personnel Report, which I believe people have a copy of.
We have a hard copy of that in your hands here tonight. There's a few new hires, one separation, one retirement, and there are no promotions or transfers at this time.
Okay. Okay. And we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I wanted to let the school committee know that our evaluation committee, a group of teachers and administrators that are working on the new educator evaluation tool, and our administrative leadership team will be receiving training through the MTA. We have three full days. We need to be trained in six modules. And the training for each of the six modules is three hours, so we'll do two modules per day. Those dates are set for January 3rd, January 24th, and February 7th. I asked for highlights around the district this month, specific to art and music. Thought we'd change it up a little bit. And so tonight, I'll report that at Bridge Street School, the music classes have been exploring Native American music, playing hoop drums, rattles, and tom-toms, various songs and games. And in art, the fifth grade is learning about drawing using the laws of perspective. They're drawing three-dimensional space on their papers and they will also be making origami boxes to demonstrate how a flat piece of paper can become a three-dimensional object. The fourth grade finished painting, painting the snowplows. You're going to hear that from every school. Quite an exciting project, they're all very proud of their work. The DPW will be posting those pictures on their website. And the fourth graders are also creating intricate Henna patterns similar to Middle Eastern art of Mende. The third grade is learning about the African-American artist Faith Ringold, who paints images on handmade quilts, creating her own story. The second grade has been working on their cityscapes after they learned how Northampton is a city and what are the differences between a town and a city. They're using oil pastels and watercolor. First grade drew their, drew their version of Blue Dog. It's created by a French New Orleans artist. They are painting their dogs a variety of colors because Blue Dog comes in all colors of the rainbow. And the kindergarten class is making papier-mache masks. After they learned how masks are made by people from all over the world, then they paint them and embellish them with feathers, pipe cleaners, and beads. Over at Ryan Road, the young artists led by Leslie Makowicz. Thank you. Makowicz have been busily creating in three mediums. They have Native American and Mexican art. Inspired the children in all grades to explore with clay, particularly making clay animals and tiles and coil pots. The kindergarten and second grade students have created wood sculptures, allowing them to explore and manipulate 3D shapes in space. The artists in first and third grade have learned to work with oil pastels and watercolors as they make pieces inspired by Kandinsky and Van Gogh. Finally, fifth graders have painted a lively mural on one of the city's snowplows. The Ryan Road School musicians, under the direction of Kim O'Connell, have been studying music from around the world. The students are singing and dancing to music from Ireland, India, Mexico, and Ghana. And the third graders are hand drumming. The fourth and fifth graders are doing more complex stick drumming. And these works will be performed with a whole school version of Supercalifragilisticexpialidocious from Mary Poppins. At Jackson Street, the December holidays always provide the students with opportunities to discover what we have in common and where we have differences. Ms. Brenda Lilly, our art teacher, has cultural and historic traditions through a variety of art projects. The work is on display in the hallways and includes the drawing of hands that are painted in the Indian custom with Henna, done by the fourth graders, cave art paintings done by the kindergartners, and doors of many colors and shapes and designs from the second graders. Over at Lead School, their snowplow was picked up by DPW and taken back to city garages to have the coat of sealer put on it. The snowplow painting was an idea that the DPW asked the schools to do after seeing it done in Wisconsin. The double-wing plow was painted by the three fifth grade classes and included the Clark students in the project. Over at JFK, the students in grades six, seven, and eight worked with Mrs. Mallory and Mr. Levine after school to draw and paint the student-generated images on their snowplow. Their theme was Keep Your Eyes Open. I'm sorry. Their theme was Make Way for JFK. A plow that incorporates the husky mascot, snow valleys, snowmen, penguins, and kids playing outside surrounded by big white teeth. The seventh grade general music classes are beginning a unit, learning and playing a song in the style of Indonesian gamelan. They will eventually play multiple parts in ensembles of nine students at a time. On Saturday, November 3rd, members of JFK a cappella singing group, the JF Keys, sang for the annual salute of veterans breakfast that was put on by the Veterans Council of Northampton. Eleven JFK students auditioned and were selected to the Western Mass Junior District Band, Orchestra, and Male Chorus. NHS choral director Bo Flahive and JFK choral director Steve Hinks are combining their programs. Both JFK Seventh and Eighth Grade Chorus and NHS Chorus are working on an arrangement of the Beatles classic Hello Goodbye. The groups will perform together during assembly at JFK and NHS Chorus Winter, Chorus and Band Winter Concert. And finally, at JFK, a visiting artist and former JFK student Max Lefkoe Everett visited and created glass faces with the seventh grade students. Max will be joining us three more times so that every seventh grader has a chance to make a personal glass face. And over at the high school, they held their annual school-wide poetry slam today. The 13th of which, I thought, I thought it was the 15th annual, I read in the paper today. At any rate, students were enjoyed, enjoyed that very much. It was an auditorium, had a chance to stop by and listen to a couple of poets. And there's a lot of passion and excitement in their performances. The NHS improv troupe held a benefit for the Northampton Survival Center in the Blackwater Theater. The Northampton and NHS Chorus have a full month of events planned, including a school concert at Bridge Street School, which I also got to see this morning, and the annual tree lighting at Pulaski Park. They will also perform a choral festival at Helen Hills Chapel and at the First Night Celebration at the Academy of Music at 7:00. And then finally, I just want to remind everybody that in January, I will bring you an update to our, the progress on our district improvement plan that we've been working on for this year, and the progress has been very impressive. Teachers and principals have been working very hard on that. And we are going to begin developing next year's district improvement plan. Our ALT team will work on it January 29th and February 5th, and we'll be presenting a draft to you for your input the evening of February 5th at 6:00 in a special meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any new business? Okay.
I hate to say, I say yes, but I'm wondering, based on what we've heard in terms of the budget season, if we should be putting aside extra school committee dates? We usually do end up having two in May and two in June. It seems like we might need to do that sooner. And I'm wondering if we should decide on those dates. Are you thinking that those are going to be necessary?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Starting in January, it sounds like.
So the sooner we can do that, the easier it's going to be in terms of our schedule. So, should we be looking at the fourth Thursday of this month? Oh, okay, that's right, we have to. So maybe just in terms of new businesses, just to be aware of, we haven't voted a calendar yet, but to be saving the second and fourth Thursdays. January, February, March, maybe April? I don't know, buddy.
Okay. So there are some business. Use your business and meeting dates on the agenda. And then finally, a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn? Second.
Okay, that's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting is adjourned.